That works. I'll have both of them up and ready. I'll have them up and ready.
No, I did.
Did you get lost?
You know, it's no different than these two. You get that, that message, you get those extras. Yeah.
Um, you better go down the stairs. Those ones, I think, were more.
They're open now.
To let everybody know, we will be starting about five minutes late. Uh, that way it gives some individuals, since we did change the location of the meeting, that, uh, uh, give people a chance, if they did show up to East Valley Middle School, give them an opportunity to get over here and to join us. So I, uh, thank you for your patience and your diligence at this point. But I'd like to give them an extra five minutes if we could. So, thanks.
It is.
Yeah.
Nice little thing.
Yeah.
I actually like it when there's something. The instance is, uh, it's kind of innovative.
All right, you're hired back.
She's good. It just was actually a fear of something about my wife. Uh, she's been doing. Not in a prime time. And trying to get a research.
No, just everything.
Right here. That's just to go on her basket with all her old stuff. So we just wanted to trust this assignment tonight. And we'll get that to her this weekend. Perfect. All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is seven thirty-five. That is the five minutes that I asked for. And, uh, hopefully those individuals that, uh, were intending to show up or were able to attend. Um, uh, I will call this regularly scheduled meeting of East Helena Public Schools into order. And the first item on our agenda is our pledge of allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. Uh, sorry about the late change in the venue due to some air conditioning problems that we have over at East Valley Middle School. We thought it was prudent to probably show up here instead. It can get pretty nasty in there. And although it makes for quicker meetings, uh, probably doesn't make it for, uh, less tempers. So, um, before this, uh, board this evening, we have this evening's agenda. Are there any questions or comments from the board on said agenda? And one thing we do have is that we will not have a student report. Um, our representative had last minute, um, obligation, she had to take care of. So she won't be joining us. Are there any other questions on this evening's agenda? Okay, seeing none, then I will now go on to the public. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on non-adjourned items. On the back of this evening's agenda are guidelines for addressing the board on such items. So at this point in time, if any member of the public would like to address the board on a non-attend item, I would give them the opportunity to do so. Okay. Seeing none, we will now move on to our reports. And the first item on the reports would be our administrators' reports. And we will see what's going on over at East Gate and over at Brinkley Para.
All right, good evening. Uh, so in my board report, the main thing I highlighted was our school-wide goals that I've talked about a few different times this year. And then what our data ended up looking like. So it's all broken apart. If you have any questions, please ask. But the main thing I really wanted to highlight tonight was, uh, we have a special guest with us. And that is our wonderful PE teacher, Mrs. Tana Featherston. And the reason why she's joining us is because she is Montana's PE Teacher of the Year. And so I thought it'd be really cool for her just to, uh, to come to announce that there's a variety of things we love about Tana. The list could go on and on and on. Uh, some main things to point out is her ability to take what the teachers are working on in the classroom and take it into the PE environment and really do a lot of that cross-curricular, um, movement where kids are learning about what they're learning about in class, but then coming into the class. And she does a great job with transitions. She only has kids for thirty minutes, but it's amazing to see what she can do in that thirty minutes. Um, in addition to all that, she's really placing an extra emphasis on social-emotional awareness. So, super lucky to have her in East Helena for her.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Any questions for either Brandon or our PE Teacher of the Year?
How do you do it?
I was gonna ask what the most difficult part of that job is, but that's kind of one in the same. How do you do it?
I don't, I feel fortunate to be, um, started my career here and still going. Uh, especially with the K-two, they're all pretty similar in developmental levels. So it's been nice just to kind of keep adjusting and, um, improving my lesson quality and teaching overall these years. I believe it will keep me young.
Well, congratulations. It's a great honor.
Thank you.
Okay, any feelings, Brandon?
Let's see, do you guys have any questions?
Okay, seeing none. Gus, it's kind of on over at Bradley.
Yeah, you folks have my board report. A lot of the similar aspects in my board report as Brandon's with, uh, really focusing on our academic assessment progress. And I really was happy with how our students finished from proficiency level in math and reading at the end of the year. But one thing that I'd like to highlight is, um, I know once we get into May and June, um, sometimes it's easy to get tunnel vision and focus on the challenges throughout the school year. But our last day of, uh, of the school year, we spent the first hour of the day in an awards assembly where we really highlighted the students who did a lot of really good things all throughout the school year. We awarded, um, some pretty, pretty neat awards to over sixty students throughout the course of, um, the school year, which was really good because that, uh, that shines the light on all the things that are going well. And it was a really nice, uh, way to cap off the year.
And some kids were rewarded by throwing water balloons. Uh, this is a timer felt. I do have videos if anybody wants to see them. And the pies, those were good.
The pies in the face were good, too.
Were the water balloons, why, were they frozen?
We don't want to teach kids that.
They look cold, though. At nine o'clock in the morning.
They were cold.
Any other questions for Gus on Bradley?
I just have one on discipline. Um, on the bullying, you have five, and then you have threat and intimidation, you have five. Were they the same or are they separate incidents?
They were separate incidents.
Any other questions? Okay, it appears like we do not have representatives from East Valley Middle School.
Lindsay is directing traffic at EVMS. And Kemper had an event tonight with his own personal children, so you're right, they're gone.
Okay, and our principal from our high school is not here to join us. So you're gonna have to carry that for you, Trish.
Oh, great. Oh, so you have my board report. Uh, the actual document portion of it just talks about the discipline referrals for May and June. Um, I thought December was bananas, but apparently June is seventy-five days long. So kids were ready to go as soon as I think graduation hit. Um, but for the most part, it was a lot of the same in April and May. A lot of it had to do with attendance, um, and really kids just feeling like they just didn't need to go to class. So, um, I had some nice long walks with some children from the parking lot to their classrooms, which, um, they did enjoy walking with me, so hopefully that deters that a little bit next year. And then the other part of the board report that I have in there is just the overall look of office discipline referrals. And, um, Mr. Condon and I fully understand that this was an anomaly. It was, it was a wild year. But if you look at our data, it's pretty dang good. And it has a lot to do with the staff at the high school and just how much they teach and reteach expectations and just take care of things in their classrooms. So our overall office referrals and detentions were down seventeen percent. And then if you look at our in-school suspensions and our out-of-school suspensions, they are way lower. We really tried to keep kids in the classroom unless it was absolutely necessary to send them home. We wanted them in the classroom with our teachers. And then a breakdown of just our office referrals, a lot of it had to do with just general inappropriate behavior that was redirected by staff, um, very few that had to be redirected by the office staff. And then the last slide that I put in there that hasn't been in there before was the vigilante star numbers. And if you look at how many vigilante stars are rewards for students that are doing what is expected in their classrooms, if you look at the total number of vigilante stars, we had five hundred and twenty-six that were handed out throughout the entire course of the school year compared to three hundred and nine office referrals. So we had almost double or, you know, about one and a half positive referrals versus the negative referrals. And that has everything to do with staff really focusing on that positive behavior in the classroom and really embracing that PDIS that we talked about throughout the course of this year. So we're excited to hit the ground running again with vigilante star. Thank you so much, Your Amazing Booster Club, who continues to fund the prizes for that, um, particular award. Um, when you start getting the big vigilante stars, you're getting into gift cards. And so kids are eating those up, they're gift cards to local businesses. And also, if you can get a kid a snack, man, they'll do pretty much anything to help you out, um, in a classroom. So really excited about where it went. We fully understand this might be one end of the year where it'd be really great, and then our numbers may go the other way. I doubt it because our staff is just doing a phenomenal job.
Okay, any questions for Trish? Don't know whether or not to blindside you with it or wait until Paul's available. The report that he included on the ACT scores, would you be able to answer those? Or would, is I'm not better off to refer that directly to him?
Probably to Paul.
Okay, then I will do so.
Because he was looking at the ACT data.
There was something that he had mentioned in his report that I thought was a little bit confusing.
Okay, I'll read ahead real quick.
Okay, any other questions for Trish? Okay, um, then we do not have an activities director report. But Oliver, I see that you are here, so let's hear what's going on over at IT.
Good evening, Eric.
Sorry, Eric. Apologies.
Good evening. You have my board report. The big thing for that is now that school's out, uh, wrapping up, closing our tickets, and, uh, completing all the upgrades that we need to make, the updates for software updates and whatnot. And then just getting Infinite Campus wrapped up and get it, make sure that it's good for next year. Infinite Campus is gonna have a URL change during the summer, so there's gonna be an update to the web address to access Infinite Campus. That's gonna be updated on the twenty-fifth of July. So from the twenty-fifth of July onward, parent portal, student portal, staff portal's all gonna be different.
But we should be able to get in.
Other than that, just wrapping up inventory and getting all our devices fixed up and ready to go.
Great. Any questions for Eric?
Yeah, so we'll still be able to get in with our same passwords and everything should go seamlessly?
Yes, it'll just be a new link. And all of its website, it's only the twenty-fifth. That link is just gonna change to a different URL.
Okay, and then the payment vendor, is that related to like lunch payments and stuff?
Payment vendor?
Says Infinite Campus, Campus Payment Vendor Change.
Oh, that's the, yes, I don't know. We have three windows to do that. We have June, July, and then, uh, December, and then June, July of next year. But I have my annual training this July, so I don't know if I'm gonna be there and might have to push it to the right. But they, they're changing their payment vendor through Infinite Campus. And there's just a couple, uh, administrative things we have to change.
So that's not related to like paying for lunches, it's like just related to paying for Infinite Campus?
No, it is for lunches. It's for credit cards.
So they'll be able to like make sure balances transfer over and?
Yes, yes. The accounts could stay the same, it's just the payment end of themselves is changing.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Eric? Thank you, Trish. So we can now move on to our trustee committee reports of the board. Um, I'm trying to remember, did we, uh, we have, we have one of the.
Glassified bargain.
Yeah, and that'll be addressed under a separate item. That'll be under, uh, item number, what do we got here? Item number two under new business. So, any other groups that matter? Um, just as a quick update, MTSBA was very much involved over last week. Um, the, we had our board of directors meetings to talk about membership engagement. Um, there's been some concern that perhaps some of the direction that MTSBA's been going with some of their conferences and some of the things that they're doing, um, haven't been exciting or attractive enough for members to be attending. So our, and membership or time, participation in those have dropped significantly. Not enough that it, uh, would warrant cancellation of those events, but more that we're taking a look to see if there's something we can offer that'd be, uh, sort of be more attractive to it. Uh, one of the other things is that we had the pleasure and opportunity to, uh, spend a day and a half with members of, uh, the education systems in Montana, legislators, uh, members of, uh, the MFP, uh, the, uh, OPI, Board of Public Education. Um, and we were all in attendance in order to listen to a speaker. She's a professor from the university, or Georgetown University, talking about economics and education funding. And it was a fascinating conversation that we had. She was one of these types of people that, uh, was not afraid to offend anybody that was in the room, and she did. And, uh, yeah, placed a lot of us onto the defensive. And, uh, it kind of pushed us out of the comfort zone and started providing some good conversations about how the legislature and the school districts can work together in order to, uh, see and spend, um, the, the funds that we get from the legislature, so. Uh, and then that all encompassed into rolling or transitioning into the Denny Altistani, which is now going on or in the process of going on. And that's in every ten-year event where the legislature meets with other stakeholders to discuss exactly that, which is educational funding. So everything just kind of worked out really smoothly. Um, uh, there was, I said, a lot of, a lot of tension, but I think it was good tension. It was people who started stopping and thinking about what do we need to do? And some of it even, you know, strolled into, one of the, one of the sponsors of the event was a group of people that were very big into, uh, private charter schools. And so that was, no, no holds barred about it. So we got both sides of the conversation and it was very eye-opening. Um, but that's what I did spend last week on. So are there any questions about my board fiascos? I'll be heading to St. Louis here in a couple of weeks for Cosmo Board of Directors meetings. Um, I will not be attending the conference. I've gotta get back before that starts. But I will be participating in the board of directors events for that, but. Yeah. So if there's no other questions, then we'll move on to our strategic planning, which is our opportunity to scan for the district's future needs and our other issues. So Dan, I want you to get started.
I don't really have too much to report other than, uh, I think I have a column in the IR tomorrow, and I'll send the text of it to you, um, to trustees. Um, it, one paragraph in it references an article that Montana Free Press published about, uh, a week and a half to two weeks ago that listed East Helena as the number-two city in the state for growth in twenty-twenty-four after Kalispell was first. Um, and that was interesting to read it because it was, we were number two based on, I think, number of people who moved here because when you looked at the percentages, we were actually at five percent and Kalispell's at three point nine, so I don't know how else they're calculating that. But, um, just kind of reinforces the conversations that we've been having with the trustees and with the infrastructure committee and, um, dealing with the reality that, um, there's, uh, this is a nice place to live and there's a lot of places to build houses here right now, so. Um, and, uh, I don't know, we said it last month, but when we were in the infrastructure committee meeting, um, back in April, um, the two realtors that were there, um, their, one comment that they had was they're still seeing, um, pretty steady demand. Um, but now instead of out-of-state people looking to buy homes in East Helena and in the, in the valley, it's in-state people looking to move from Kalispel, Missoula, and Bozeman to Helena, East Helena, because it's a cheaper place to live for them. So, um, just kind of interesting numbers. And, uh, kind of what it did for me was just, uh, reinforced the fact that we've got to continue to be vigilant about, um, our student numbers and our facilities and try to be prepared.
Okay, does any members of the board have any thoughts, ideas, perspectives on our strategic plan and our long-term needs?
How are we, this may be outside of the scope of this, but are we still engaged with the developers on land acquisition?
Um, not actively right now. The, uh, I think our next opportunity to talk about that will be as the Habitat plat moves through the process with the city of East Helena. Um, we already know that they're interested in having a school in their subdivision and looking in that direction. And then this, and then the Brinkley Para states is not looking at any type of a school site. And I think as those reviews start coming around, um, some of us probably ought to be speaking to the city council about, I, I guess in my view, I think that's pretty short-sighted to build three to five thousand homes in an area and not put a, at least an elementary school in that, one of those neighborhoods, so. Um, I think we at least need to, we can't make demands, but we can at least share our insights and thoughts.
They haven't gone through final class yet?
Nope.
Okay, cool.
I know that, uh, Habitat project in particular is, is, the city believes it's gonna be held up a little bit by the fact that they need to build a second water reservoir up at the top of the hill there. And, um, they don't necessarily, they're not sure they have the money for it yet right now, so they could, could slow them down a little bit.
Thank you, Dan.
And you haven't heard anything more about systems impact on highway?
No, I haven't heard anything on my end. That's why I was asking.
Sure. Any other thoughts, perspectives? Okay, then as per policy, we will revisit this at our next meeting as well. We can move forward. Uh, next item on the agenda is notifications of our retirements and resignations. And we'll say a few of those, too.
We do, um, uh, we lost a couple pair of professionals that have been with us for a while. Um, Dennis Briggs was a custodian, uh, for us at EVMS, and, uh, he's gonna be sorely missed. He's going back home to Whitehall, um, where he's got his family. Um, a couple of teachers, Katie Vanderzanden, who most recently was at East Helena High School, but prior to that was at EVMS, and Jason Cobb, who was a social studies teacher at EVMS. Katie is resigning to, uh, she and her husband Drew are moving to Idaho where her family is, uh, kind of situated and want to be closer to family. Um, Jason, I believe, is resigning to start a business or purchase a business and, uh, kind of go on a different route. And then, uh, a bus driver whose name you might recognize, Garrett Olmer, has done a great job for us this spring, but he's looking at some other opportunities.
And you accepted those on our behalf?
Yes, I did, thank you.
Okay. So any questions for Dan on the resignations and retirements? Okay, seeing then, we'll go on to our consent action items. Before the board this evening, we have minutes of our May twelfth meeting as well as our special meeting on May nineteenth. Uh, the current and former warrants approval, personnel actions, and surrounding district school enrollment approval. Typically, there is no debate on consent action items. However, if any member of the board would like to discuss or debate an item separately, they can ask to have it polled and we can do so. Um, otherwise, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent action items as presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent action items as presented?
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
And a second from Tyrell. Uh, all those in favor of the motion can be signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no, motion carries. And we'll now move on to unfinished business, which, the number one on there is our TA grant progress update.
All right, and we have some special guests with us tonight, Clinton Robbie here from Staley. And did you guys wanna speak or do you want me to try and handle this? I'll, I'll let you guys.
We'd love to have you speak.
Yeah.
I'll just introduce myself. I'm Robbie Culver with Staley Engineering, and I'm the grant writer who'll be writing the Transportation Alternatives Grant, um, to the, uh, Greater Helena Area Metropolitan Planning Organization that was recently formed. This grant is due August second, so we'll be working on that. Um, in your packet, I think there's the map and a, and a engineer's opinion of cost. And so that's what we'll be using primarily tonight. I want to make sure I get any comments from you that might change that routing. But that's what we're planning is the couple of blocks on Main Street and then down Kalispel Avenue. So if there's any thoughts or opinions on that. So if there's any thoughts or opinions on that, I'd like to hear that. I'll be the contact for the grant, so if you have any other instances where it was unsafe for children or adults, for that matter, to cross Main Street, I'd love to hear from you, so. And this is Clint Smith. He's a construction engineer with Staley Engineering, and he's going to be helping with the technical part of the grant, so.
Yeah, so I think that if you had a chance to look at the documents, you can see the proposed pathway. And then it puts, it moves the crosswalk that we're concerned about, which is right now at the end of Kalispell Street. It moves it down to Lane Avenue closer to where Lallani's and Vigilante's is. And brings a sidewalk around the corner and down that block. We kind of feel like that's a safer place for crossing. Is that the best way to put that? There's, there's no landing on the south side of Main Street at the end of Kalispell there, so kids are stepping off the pavement and down about a twelve foot and bank and into the ditch there. And so this seems like a better fit. The next two pages, the, as the engineer's estimate of cost, I think the numbers that the, the district needs to be pretty clear on is that the estimate for our match for the base project is around seventy thousand dollars. The total project coming in, just under five hundred thousand dollars. So TA pays eighty-five percent of it and we get the project for seventy thousand. And then there were some optional add-ons there that may be part of the project, but maybe not, that if we were successful with the grant, we'd have an opportunity to talk about that. The, the, we, we had a discussion as to whether or not we wanted permission from the board tonight to proceed with the application, but when we contracted with Staley, we contracted them through the application process. Even when we apply, it doesn't mean we just spent seventy thousand dollars because then we have to be approved. And then it'll probably take at least two years, maybe three years, to get to the actual construction time after engineering and dealing with property rights and everything. So we would have some time to, to get our ducks in a row to be able to pay that bill. The, the other part of it is that the city of East Helena hasn't told us that they won't partner with us on this. Kevin Orr, who I've talked to a couple of times about it, is very interested and working with us on this to get this done. The, the city is just a little timid right now about obligating funds until they know what's going on with Valley Drive and the Raze Grant. And I'm not sure where that's at right now. So we anticipate that unless somebody's got a lot of heartburn about it, we're going to continue through the application process, get the application submitted. We expect it'll be three to five months before we get a decision, is that?
I, I would guess, it doesn't really say. I know the regular TA applications take forever.
Sure.
And they won't know that until November, but I think the MPO will maybe be a little different, so.
Okay. And, and even if it's, if, if we're successful and the application is approved, if we decided at the last minute that we couldn't do it, we could decline. So this definitely, it's not a done deal. We have some planning in place. And again, this was a, a pretty huge safety concern that was bought up, brought up by a trustee a few months ago. It was an issue a few years ago and we had an EVMS student that almost was hit by a truck there before sunrise coming to school one day. So there have been some concerns and this is just an opportunity for us to try and address it. And probably, I would guess, hopefully, a little bit of a less competitive environment than the statewide TA grant application process, so. I'll shut up.
Are these rectangular rapid flashing beacons? Would those be at this crosswalk on either side of Main Street? Would those be triggered?
They, they can be, right?
Yes, they can be motion activated, triggered.
Okay.
They're push button.
Push button?
Yeah, just like the outside of.
What, I, I guess, what are the different colors? Well, there's no keys, there isn't that I can find. What like red, blue and green?
There is a, it's probably.
Oh, is that?
Right, and crosswalks where it's yellow. Red is the primary project, which if you're, if you compare it to the estimate, that's the first estimate and probably what we'll apply for. And then the other options, A and, and the two B options are a different color. Their A is green and one B and two B is blue.
I got you, okay, thank you.
I know, it's hard to see on that eight and a half by eleven, we have in there.
Any other questions?
There for sure is not a penalty if we decline in the end.
Out of curiosity, and I think I've asked this question before, but I'm just not really sure how clear I am on it. When we're, the location that they're talking about on there, we've got kind of a trifecta of different things going on. We have the school district involved, we have the city of East Helena involved. Main Street is actually a non-system highway that Montana Department of Transportation administers to. So I guess, and I don't want to put Tyrell on the spot necessarily, but his knowledge of systems impact might be helpful. Besides the fact that TA, the TA grant is being administered by the Department of Administration, or at least being, the process is through them, is there any other involvement that the Department of Transportation will have on this besides just the TA portion of the grant?
Being that it's in the MPO, I don't think there's much that the, at least not the engineering side will deal with, Scott, maybe the planning department, because that's ultimately where the funds are coming from. But the MPO, if I remember the rules correctly, they're allowed to administer their own federal funds now. So they get a, they get essentially a check and can administer such. However, the engineering could be done by the department. I'm not sure how that works with the MPO. Typically, the TA program would, would contract with a consultant to do the engineering and design or in-house services, like the one that went from Prickly Pear to EVMS along, what's that, Lewis Street? Yeah, Lewis, that was designed by in-house employees, so. I don't know, I.
I guess my question more is in relationship to would they have additional requirements that we would need to meet or follow that perhaps we wouldn't have had to meet through St. Louis Street, which was solely a subset within the East Helena school, or East Helena City limits?
Unless the MPO puts those on, I don't think the department would put anything extra on. It's going to be the same, as far as they're concerned, as long as the funds meet the purpose and need and the project meets the federal requirements to spend the money on that, then it's, I think they're good to go.
And during the application process, we, we will be contacting MDT to make sure to, that we answer those exact questions that you just asked, because we want to know that too.
And that's out of the consultant's line, girl, so they're, they're going to know a lot more about that than I will.
And, and part of the application is looking at any kind of risk. You have to do a little bit of risk analysis, and one of it would be that MDT told us, sorry, you can't cross our road. I mean, that would be, that would be a risk. Sorry, we want to identify anything like that that, that might happen, so.
So the, the district is taking on the responsibility of these fees, this twelve thousand in fees?
That's already been contracted.
We agreed it up in February.
Okay.
Yeah.
Questions, so the location you've got, I guess I'm not sure how far in the, the plans you are yet. I know that you're contracted for about fifty percent level plans. Are you there yet or roughly, or you know, or is this still just early grant phase?
This is just early grant things and, yeah, and we'll, you know, that'll be part of the.
We'll be able to get a chance to comment on those plans and I'm assuming you'll update your engineer's opinion of that, Mike? So then another question I have is the location. I guess, looking at the location, I have some concern with it being right on the end of that really long right turn that would be the northbound right coming out of Lane onto Main Street. That's a really wide approach there.
Right.
So there's sometimes people use slip lane, they'll use it as a right turn slip lane. So they're pretty much getting rocking and aren't going to be paying attention. So just, I guess that'd be just something to consider, like the actual location. Because at that point, I don't know if it'd still be a mid-block crossing. It's, you might have to move it further to the east since. Yeah, to the east. Just, just comments on that, I'm not saying a hundred percent anywhere, but just the interaction, that's a very busy intersection, so.
Since A and W's left that area many years ago, and we, we observed the same thing in growing up here. They cut across there to get through when people are trying to make the left turns. One of the possibilities, or one of the things we'll look at is on map, here we've got to go around that to deter on there, so some of those things will be looked at.
Thank you. Did you do any counts? Did you guys observe the crossing yet?
MDT apparently has done some counts at the current crossing.
Years ago, yeah, a couple of years ago.
So we have not done any.
Okay. Are you scoped to do so?
I, I don't recall it, we're.
This is too late now, man, with the kids, it's probably too late now until fall, but.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Do you have an estimate? Do you think?
I don't.
I know, we've talked about it, we're like, I don't know, we can look at the number of homes in that area and think about it from that perspective, how we can make some assumptions.
I've seen traffic counters on Main Street especially over, you know, periodically over the course of the last few years, so there may be some traffic data associated with that. As far as lane goes, I don't know if.
Well, I was talking pedestrian, how many pedestrian crossings?
Oh, yeah.
Does that rule determine, because I mean, if it doesn't meet thresholds for enhanced like RFB systems, which it, it could very well, maybe not, but if that's not available, then bobouts or some other form of traffic calming type, high visibility crossing that doesn't have the flashing lights may be in order, so.
Any other questions, comments? Good discussion, thank you, appreciate your report. Look forward to hearing more about what's going on for TA grant.
Thanks, you guys.
If I were to have some of my air comments on, yes, about this, I'd just say.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay, we'll now move on to our consideration of new non-resident applications for early literacy and pre-kindergarten.
Okay, it's in the commentary in your packet. These are seven early K students and six kindergarten applicants that we're asking you to consider approving for non-resident status for next year. The six, the, the seven early K students, we have room for in the three sections of early K that we have. They're not going to create hardship or a problem there. The kindergarten students, the six, we can accommodate, and these six meet our priority standards that we set, that they either have a sibling that already attends the district or they are the child of a employee. And we have an additional ten kindergarten applicants that we're going to ask that we waitlist because we don't know if we have room for them at this time. And reading through our policy and our procedure, if we waitlist them, we are not denying their application. It's simply on a waitlist until us, if a spot became available, at that point, we would bring it to the board to ask for approval for that child to come into the district. So we could revisit that waitlist in August or even September. I have a hunch that some of these parents might make other plans for their kids if it's up in the air. But we need that action so that we can notify them that they're on the waitlist. And Brandon and I have been kind of racking our brains about this for actually the last couple of years. It's really hard with kindergarten to know in June what your fall counts are going to be because most parents come in and register early in the spring and go through screening, but we always have, and, and the range has been what, anywhere from five to thirty who show up between July first and the first day of school.
Yeah, on average, about nineteen in the summer.
Yeah, so.
That is a whole section.
Yeah, it is a whole section, and that's why we want to protect the situation a little bit there.
So I'll make a motion to approve the students with the recommended for non-resident status and put the ten kindergarten applicants on the waitlist.
Yeah, we do have a motion, do I have a second?
A second?
Yeah, a second from Stacy. Questions, comments from the board, Tyrell?
So all of these students have met the time and deadline, they both?
Yeah, these, these were timely.
So those on the waitlist, when, if I can reach the request, when, if it comes back to the board, that's, just so they remember.
Yeah, and they'll be, then with the waitlist, we'll have to go to our time and date stamp to have the application actually coming in.
Okay, thank you.
This keeps our class sizes within.
Our quality education standard, yes, good question.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Questions or comments from the public? Saying then I'll call the question, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed by saying no, motion carries. We'll now move on to item number three, which is consideration of a new non-resident applications for newly hired district employee.
Yeah, so this is a situation we discussed extensively when we dealt with the policy. This is a gentleman who's agreed to come on board as a special education teacher at, at Prickly Pear Elementary. He has a kindergartner and a second grader, he would like to enroll. He was hired in May, so was unaware that he was coming to work here by our April fifteenth deadline, which is why the application is late.
So it's just these two individual children?
In this action, yes.
This action, yeah, okay.
So I would recommend approving the students recommended for non-resident. Well, it's actually, I'm going to rephrase that. I would recommend approving the students for enrollment that are the children of this newly hired teacher.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second? Second from Mark. Questions or comments from the board? Questions or comment?
I guess I have, I have a comment, so timestamp wise, are we putting his kindergartner in front of the other ten?
Yeah.
And could there be repercussions for that?
It's actually in our procedure that if you're a district employee, that you have priority.
Is that not in our collective bargaining agreement?
I believe it is, Kate, help me out, didn't we put that?
I don't think we did because we put it in policy. We never made a change to the budget.
Okay, okay.
Any questions or comments from the public? Saying then, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed by saying no?
No.
And if I, Tyrell is no. Okay, and we will now move on to item number four, enrolled business, which is our consideration of non-resident applications for a current student that moved out of the district.
Okay, I have some heartburn with this one, and I'll explain, and you can ask me questions. This is a parent who lived in the district until recently, moved the family to Jefferson County. The dad was a remote worker who, yeah, earlier, or sometime last winter, was called back to the office and is now commuting to work in Salt Lake City, is my understanding. Mom still lives here with the kids, dad's going back and forth, obviously their life's a little chaotic. The move happened sometime between winter and spring, and they were unaware of the deadline. They submitted an application for two kids to come in as non-resident kids. As superintendent, I have the discretion to consider bringing those to the board. One of the students, I'm not bringing to you tonight because she's not a current student in the East Helena School. She's attending school in Montana City, and in that instance, I think they completely just missed the deadline and can apply for next year. The other student has been a student of ours for five years. She's a junior at East Helena High School and will be a senior next year. And, and so that's why I'm bringing it to you. And um, and so that's why I'm bringing it to you, so this young lady can finish with her classmates at East Helena High School, um, even though it's a late application.
So did that make sense, first off?
And she's a current student, already counted in our student numbers, where the other student would be an additional student in the district.
So this consideration is just for the singular student associated with the senior status, okay?
So I'll make a motion to approve the student recommended for enrollment.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second, please.
Second from Tiffany. Questions or comments from the board?
Assuming good standing?
Yes, what?
I didn't hear it.
Assuming good standing?
Yes.
How did this come to anyone's attention?
Um, the dad called Jen ten days ago.
Was they literally self-reported?
Yeah.
Never self.
And the family does actually still own the home in East Helena, so they technically are taxpayers, but they're not residents. Um, at this time, which is what he called to inquire about and then applied, so.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
There's no other applicants for 12th grade.
No.
I'll be honest with you, when it first was approached with this, I felt a little bit uncomfortable considering what was going on with the situation. Um, even though it's definitely somebody that has been part of our school district um, for some time. It's, you know, we've done as much as we possibly could in order to inform, let people know, um, just, and especially with the out-of-state arrangement and even how to count the arrangement, it gets to be kind of messy all the way around. But um, you know, I, I struggled with it a little bit, but.
Did they get the same email? I mean, I'm in district, so obviously I don't, I, I don't know if I just don't pay attention to it.
So the superintendent update goes out to every parent who has an email address or a cell phone number with the district. So I'm assuming, and I know that I personally covered it at least three times in that document this spring, at least two, I think three. And then, and then the secretaries were contacting students that they knew were non-resident kids, which was why this family didn't get a call, because the secretary was unaware that they had moved to Jefferson County.
So essentially we were completely unaware until he called?
Yeah. So he wouldn't have actually known.
He wouldn't have gotten any sort of information prior to that?
Right.
Except unless he read here.
Right.
Probably the worst case scenario is something may have happened in the fall semester. We would have found out, either something was sent off, found out that they were non-resident. And then at that point in time, we'd have to deal with it or refuse admission for the final semester of her senior year. And I don't think anybody would have the stomach to do anything like that, so. Yeah, any other questions, comments from the board?
Do, and do we have, I don't even know. Do we have a definition of residency?
Yeah, we, so we usually ask for a power bill in your name for a lease agreement with your landlord if you don't own. Um, so those are the two.
But they would have those things here. They would have those in district.
They, these folks.
Yeah, cause they have a house still in district.
But they probably, unless they are paying the power there, they probably wouldn't.
Who owns a house and doesn't pay power?
I think they rent it. I don't, I don't know that for sure. These are probing questions, Mark.
I got you.
I feel like I have an attorney on my back.
I, that makes perfect sense. I didn't understand.
Yeah.
And do we, it, it, maybe it doesn't matter, I don't, because I'm inclined to not be concerned with it, but when did they move?
I don't know for sure. Did he tell you?
It's been recent, the last two, three months, maybe.
Yeah.
So they may have moved after the day of deadline.
Yeah, that was the impression that we got.
Okay.
If there's no other questions from the board, are there any questions, comments from the public? Okay, saying none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed by saying no.
No.
If I, Tyrell? Okay. So we'll move on to new business, and the first item under new business is our consideration, uh, or no, a report on our 21st century after-school program.
And Carly is here tonight. She's going to talk this.
I could have slides. I did not think to send them to you, so I'll just read off the one, or else you can send them all to them later, if that's okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, so after-school program, just those of you that don't know what that is, it is a program that we have a grant. We're $93,000, it's a five-year grant, so this is our second year. Next year will be going into our third year. Um, so $93,000, we normally, on the fourth and fifth year, it goes down in money. We did just find out that that's changing. We will get the $93,000 for all five years. So that's very exciting news. We don't have to try to fund it for less money. Um, we also were able to fund the Radley tutoring, as well as the robotics programs this year. Um, Radley tutoring was every day this year, every morning, um, had averaged about 10 students that came in from 7:30 to 8:10, um, received tutoring services. And then the robotics program that ran, it runs, oh, in the fall till um, roughly January, was able to go through there. Um, we have East Gate, which is our K through second program. Prickly Pear students um, are best over there. We had 20 students in there this year. Um, just, so you, just the um, the program, 3:30 is when they come in, they have a snack. Um, they actually switched it, so they go outside, get some windows out first, since they're younger. Then they come in and have about a 15-minute tutoring homework time, which is again part of the grant. These are all elements that have to be included in there. Um, after that, there is a lesson that's very hands-on, not like classroom activity, uh, field-based. And then after that, reading as they play for parents to pick up. So it's kind of how the program runs, ends up at 5:30, uh, by parents have the 5:30 to pick up. Um, and then Radley, we, um, that's grades three through eight, mostly three through five. We had a few sixth grade, seventh, um, one eighth grader. Um, and that we had, started with 23, we, we started a little higher, we lost a few. Um, that runs the same, same configuration, except for we go to homework, snack, homework, and then outside. What changed in, we had a little bit, we tried to do a format this year, um, in February, we had one of our teachers go on maternity leave. So to try to boost enrollment, we actually split it, added, and was able to hire another teacher. Uh, we used up a teacher, high school aide, and then their site coordinator who goes over the everything. We hired another one, we were able to get up to 29. There was more on our waiting list, but they, uh, this is March, and so people had other plans made, obviously, didn't work waiting. So our hope is with enough staff, next year, be able to have two groups. They come in, they have to pick, there's two lessons. They can pick which one they wanted, which is a big part of the program, is choice. They could say, oh, today it's, you know, STEM, or it's art, or it's STEM, or it's whatever the teachers had planned. So they could pick into groups. So our hope, we have enough staff to do that, so we could get up to maybe 45, 50 kids. Um, as their applications are going now, to hopefully be able to do that. Other thing with that help with staff retention is if we could ideally have eight-week group where a teacher could commit to a less time. That's one of the problems with staffing, so I'm trying to hopefully adjust it next year. If there's a teacher that wants to do eight weeks of STEM, as a group, it would be a different teacher. So we're trying some of those things this year to try to get a bigger group of, of people served. But we were able to extend and get that a little higher, um, at the end of the year. Um, a couple of other things that we did this year, sorry, my mouth is getting dry. Um, our goal was partnerships. We gained three this year. Life Point Church, Heritage Market, and Safeway, all donated um, for our family engagement programs. We also partnered with Harvest of the Month program through OPI, where they came once a month and taught the kids about uh, food. There's one every month, they brought samples, they had posters, that was a lot of fun. We've got that set up for next year. We also signed MOUs, which basically um, were through, with the robotics club, the enrichment classes the district does, and the sports and um, um, the sports, uh, what's the, and the murals. So basically, cause when the kids go to those, we were not able to count their attendance. Through this MOU, we can both count them, so if they say they go there, they're still in the district, but we can still count their attendance. So that was a great way to be able to keep our attendance up, and then the other activities that are at our district, we can count them. So that was another great um, thing we did this year. Um, we're required to have two family engagements. They went great this year. Um, we had one in the fall. The kids actually created their board game, where we made um, clay game pieces. That was great, cause the parents saw them making it. When they picked them up, they're talking about us, they were really invested. Hey, can't wait for you to play it. Lots of great turnout, and played with them, had snacks that were donated. And then the spring, we did, the younger kids made bouncy balls, and had games with them that went really great. The older kids, they actually did like project-based, like kind of like a tour of countries. And the families got into it, they brought foods from the countries, it turned out really great. It just was really fun. Um, another big focus, this is actually a federal goal, as well as OPI's goal, is exposing kids to careers. So about every Friday, we had career days. We had the parents, not a lot, we had firefighters, we had people from banks. We had welders, we had policemen, we had nurses, we had people from the state that deal with fingerprinting. We had, just, it's a lot of fun, so um, great exposure to different careers, had to write questions and thank you cards, a lot of writing, good writing, uh, as well. So just a lot of great activities that were happening. Um, this was a really, really fun year. Parents just were really connected. It was, it was a really great year of, of program, with really great staff, and we're excited for, for next year.
Does the board have any questions for after-school program coordinator?
I, I, I'm not sure I heard you. Did, how many years are left on the grant?
We're going to our third.
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah. So this is two of the cycle, cycle, so.
Cool.
Any other questions? Thank you, appreciate the report. Sounds like it's been successful.
Yeah.
Thanks, Carly. Carly came tonight after a long day of training today downstairs. But we appreciate it. Um, this is a, a, a great program. It's been a staple in the district for a while. Even though, like Carly says, five-year grant, this is our fourth five-year cycle, I think. Um, Joe McMahon and I worked together on the first uh, application years ago, so long ago that I can't remember how long ago it was. Um, and it's just been a nice resource for uh, school-age kids to have a safe place to go after school, so appreciate that.
And we'll now move on to consideration of a memo agreement. Um, for our classified staff, and we'll check that out.
Okay, um, those who are on the classified uh, negotiating committee met with me about a week ago to look this over and discuss it. Um, and you guys are welcome to chime in at any time if you want to. Um, when we settled uh, negotiations with classified staff last spring, um, we set a plan for, we, we, we settled on a three-year agreement, but we set a plan for wages um, for the first year and the second year, and agreed that we would meet in the spring of 2026 to discuss wages for 2026. Um, when the STARS Act passed and uh, was something of a little bit of a windfall for the district, and that we got some additional money, um, I floated the idea with Scott to possibly start trying to draw up an agreement with the classified staff that would settle wages for the third year and provide um, a little bit bigger bump going into next year than we thought we were going to be able to when we settled negotiations last year, cause we didn't know the STARS Act was going to happen. Um, so um, with that in mind, I drew some of this up, presented it to the committee. Um, they were supportive of it, um, although they did have a lot of questions. And took it from there, presented it to Michelle, and asked her to consider it. Um, she brought it to her association. They've approved it. Um, so it's back in front of the board, waiting for approval. Um, does anybody from the committee want to speak about it?
I just, you know, there's, there's so many jobs out there that are available that are actually higher than this, and um, so to improve our chances of staffing the school, I think it's probably a good idea to try to get as good a quality of people and keep, and retain them as we possibly can, so. If, as long as it's affordable and we're not, I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, we, uh, to, to kind of get down to the nitty-gritty, um, we had agreed on a 25 cent an hour increase going to next year. Um, this provides a 75 cent an hour increase for returning staff, so if they work for us this year and um, sign their letter of intent to come back next year, they'll get um, a, a bigger pay increase. And then instead of increasing starting wages next year by 15 cents an hour, we're increasing them by 50 cents an hour. And I guess that's a little bit of a selfish move on my part with, for the district to try and make these positions attractive. Um, this past year, the principals will tell you that we had anywhere from eight to 13 paraprofessional positions open all year long that we just weren't getting applicants for. Um, similar story in the kitchen. Um, Michelle had three openings in the kitchen that um, she's been trying to fill all year, and um, a similar situation with our custodians. So um, some of our uh, lowest-paid and very hard-working employees, uh, this is just an opportunity for the district to um, try to uh, provide some additional support since we sent the passage of the STARS Act.
Any of the other members who want to.
No, that's a very good synopsis of our discussion.
Okay. So before the board this evening, we have set memorandum of agreement for this. And so at this point in time, I would entertain a motion to approve such agreement. Based on, I guess, the recommendation of the, the classified committee.
I would make a recommendation to approve the agreement based on the recommendation of the classified committee.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Stacy, question, additional questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the public?
Scott, can I come and speak?
Please.
I know, I've met some of you. I'm Michelle Ashway. I'm the president of this support association. I'm also an instructional tutor at Radley. So um, being on this classified list and seeing the, the movement of a lot of our, especially for, for those of us who are, you know, teaching or in the classroom, um, the movement of pairs is just crucial. We lost two good ones. You saw it tonight on the resignation list. Those are two, you know, wonderful pairs that we will lose this year, both leaving for, um, you know, they came to me and basically said, I'm leaving because of pay. I have to go somewhere else where I can get better pay, and um, you know, this'll, this makes more sense for my family. So I, I, obviously this changed for next year. Our hope is that it will attract new um, qualified employees and retain some of the other wonderful pairs and classify, other classified staff that we, that we currently have. So this is, when I brought it to our membership, I, I didn't have time to really, enough time to really take it to everybody. When I took it to the executive board, it was unanimous. This was, this was a good idea. This was far more than what we had expected for next year. And then still, and avoid having to negotiate again, which is, is appealing on our end also. That's always kind of nice to not have to do that one more year, so I just, thank you for the consideration.
Any other question or comments from the public? Okay, saying none, then I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion to approve the MOA, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed by saying no. Motion carries. Thank you, and thank you, Michelle. Appreciate you doing that for, giving it for your, your membership. Okay. As Dan begins passing out, the next item under consideration is a contract, a potential contract for natural gas with Commercial Energy.
I know this is everybody's favorite thing to deal with.
Why are we supposed to, like, it's so gambling, it's.
I don't have enough for everybody, but if you guys want to just take one, pass some around, people can share. So our, you guys will remember that we contract for natural gas with, uh, or have been contracting for natural gas with a company out of Cut Bank called Commercial Energy. Um, the advantage to doing that is it gives us a guaranteed steady price for the term of the contract if we take the fixed-price option. Um, and even if we take the collared price option, it prices our gas in a range um, that at least we have some predictability. Um, this uh, contract came to me shortly before the meeting, which was part of the reason I walked in here at 5:29 and 59 seconds. Um, and I'm, I'm not sure why it took so long for him to get it prepped and done, but it did. And I'm not sure why it took so long for him to get it prepped and done, but it did. There's a lot of kind of weird things going on since we signed our agreement last year. The biggest one was that we signed a 10-month agreement last year to have our contract end June 30th with the hope that maybe we could jump on the state of Montana's contract. And as of today, the state of Montana's contract expires at the end of the month, and they just started the procurement process to renew it. And so the guy that I'm dealing with at Commercial Energy said he's not sure that the state will have a contract in place even by fall. Which, his comment to me was if the university system has to go out on the open market and buy gas from Northwestern Energy at market rates, it will cost them at least $3 million more even next year than it cost them this year. So there's, so the state is, for whatever reason, a little behind the eight ball, and so we're no longer looking at getting on board with the state. I just asked them for pricing for a year so that we could get something locked in. And so the other kind of weird thing that's been going on is there have been some changes in, I guess you'd call it geopolitics, particularly between the United States and Canada, which is where most of our natural gas comes from. And so his comment on the phone to me today was that, starting in about a month or two, Canada will begin shipping, I think he said, I don't even know, 2 million cubic feet per day of natural gas to the Asian market out of their port in Vancouver. And so they anticipate a pretty significant price spike in natural gas, so that affects all of us in our home power bill as well. So the pricing was a little bit disheartening, our last contract that we signed last fall was, I believe, 303 a decotherm, this one's 394, so that's about a 33% increase, the way I do math. We have had prices above $4 a decotherm, so it's not like it's the highest that we've ever seen. We have choice tonight, my recommendation would be to sign the agreement and jump on board the fixed price at 394. We could also hedge our bets and go on the collared price, which would give us a range of a floor at 314, which is probably where it's at right now in June and July, and a maximum of 514, which is probably what we'll be paying in January and February when we use the most natural gas. So the collared, or the fixed price gives you a steady, a steady rate all year long, and that's typically what we've been signing on for. With that, I think I can be quiet and leave questions. Our other option is we just don't do anything, we just are, then we're buying our gas on the open market month to month, so it'll fluctuate whatever, and that market is based on supply and demand, so like you said, in the wintertime when demand is high, you're going to be paying a high rate. Right now, he said you'd probably be paying a lot less than 394 a decotherm, but we hardly use any gas in the summertime, so.
Am I correct in remembering, this is always like, it's like a Rubik's Cube. Am I correct in thinking that we usually choose a fixed price?
Yeah, we do.
And we have had a positive experience with this company?
Yeah.
And there's only like two or three that could provide gas, is that correct?
That's true. Northwestern Energy, these guys, and Shell is the only other company that I know of, and that's who the state's with right now.
Gotcha. My only recollection from all this from last year is that it seemed well beyond the statistical capabilities or knowledge base of any of us, like it's, there are people that professionally do this, and like, they can't come up with anything like that.
Right.
It's much easier to budget this.
It is.
Like, this is how energy traders make money.
And I did take the liberty of going on to Henry Hub and checking to see what the futures prices were on it, and there was so much volatility on all of that because nobody like Dan was saying, nobody really knows what's going to happen, so a lot of the commodities are just all over the place. Dealers are hedging their bets, or making sure they're protected and the risk that's associated with it. So I mean, the market could just go down and we could be paying a premium, but effectively he said, at least it's a known value, so. What's that difference?
Not the greatest year for us to have futures.
How many can? Yeah, winter will come, that's the one that we're pretty sure of.
Yeah, it will happen.
100%.
So if there's no questions, I would consider a motion to accept the, one of the options that the motion is presented.
I make a motion to accept the fixed price from Commercial Energy for a year, right? A year contract?
Yeah, it's a one-year.
Do I have a second? Bart? Questions, comments from the board?
You'll get it, if it's approved, you'll be able to run it.
Yeah.
It's fire time.
Yep, Jen's going to help me with that.
Questions or comments from the public? Saying none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no? Motion carries. We got gas. Okay, next item on the agenda, number four, is consideration of renewal of contract for, or actually not renewal, but placement of a contract for a wrestling coach. Dan, why don't you take that off?
All right, so what's on the agenda is to hire Tim Baird, who has been our wrestling coach for four years, three years, four years?
Head coach for three, this'll be the fourth.
This'll be the fourth year. This program has really grown and developed, and part of what we wrestled with was at what point do we determine that we're separating the girls' program from the boys' program? Girls' wrestling was something that kind of came at us out of left field for a while, girls were wrestling boys and wrestling with the boys' program, but the sport of girls' wrestling has really taken off across the state, and I believe we have to split it by next year, is that what you heard?
27, 28.
Okay, so we have a little bit of time. But MHSA is requiring us to run it as two separate programs in the future. So this recommendation would be to keep Tim on as the coach of the entire wrestling program for the '25-'26 school year, and then we'll have to make some tough decisions next spring as to what we're going to do.
And due to the nature of having one of the board members be married to the, to that head coach, there are certain requirements that were needed or necessary based on state law, one of which was it was posted, what was it, IR for how many, what was it, 16 days?
Two different times, and the last one being at least two weeks before today that they were both in.
Okay. Another item is that we need full participation of all the board members here, and we do have a full board, and then Stacy will have to recuse herself from the vote as a result of that, but other than that, I think all of the nepotism requirements have to be unanimous. And it has to be unanimous. So at this point in time, I would entertain an initial motion to approve the hiring of Tim as the boys' and girls' wrestling coach. Get a motion from Tyrell?
Or I'll second.
Second from Preston. Questions or comments for the board?
How many girls were there wrestling?
I don't know, do you know?
Eighteen last year.
So how many boys were there wrestling?
Twenty-seven.
I think that's what was on the poster.
It probably changed during the year.
What's that, Tim, I'm sorry?
We finished with 17 girls last year and 34 boys.
So there's been a lot of interest in this, in the split, can, would you mind, I don't know if it's appropriate, is this a good time?
Absolutely.
Okay, would you, can you kind of tell us about what this, how the split will happen, why you think it should happen later, and like, what the purpose of it is? Or you may not, I don't know, I mean, I hear that there's a required split coming up.
There is a required split, Ridgeway rules prompted that.
I don't know what that means, but.
It's a sports equity law on the books.
Okay, okay, thanks.
We already split ours technically. What we did last year, jumping ahead, was I split the mats in half. Had two coaches on the girls' side, two coaches plus myself, I was in between both on the boys' side. We're technically already split, just jumping ahead, knowing this is coming. Now practices will look different to where the girls will have the whole mat for their section of time, the boys will have the whole mat for their section of time. So it's nothing, nothing major, except we're not hiring another coach at this time, I guess would be the easiest way to say it. But they're already two split programs.
So are there administrative, I mean, like, you would have administrative duties, I mean, it'd be, what will be different when it does split, I guess?
Take half my workload away?
What's that?
Take half my workload away?
Yeah, I mean, so, I guess that's the question I have, is like, it's kind of odd to me because they, do they, they compete in separate venues at times, correct?
At times. Usually the first day of a two-day tournament, we've got two coaches and one gym with them. Depending on the school, like when we go to Bozeman, there's six gyms, we're all in the same building. As you go to day two, they move, like CMR, the first day, the girls are great falls high, they run through the first half of their bracket, the second day they're over at CMR with the boys in the championship side. If that answers your...
No, that's, yeah, that's exactly, and I guess I was trying to think of it in terms of like, like track has one coach and his two genders. But I was trying to think of other things that are, that are in the same place or split, et cetera, and I just don't know anything about it. So like, what will, what administrative functions do you have now that will be eventually, I mean, you would clearly work with the girls' coach, because you'll go to, do they always go to the same places?
We have.
Would you, would that always be the case, are there opportunities to go separate places?
There are opportunities, and we actually have an extra week of the season this year, which has kind of messed most of the state up because everything, in the past, like the events are on the same weekend. Where right now, we have two open dates, one of those we could put the girls there and leave the boys at home, or last year we get a camp here, a free camp for everybody, for the community. The other weekend, we have an opportunity, we could go to an all-girls tournament where we split the teams, or they can go with, that's the Whitehall for our dual tournament, now has a girls' tournament there as well, which we took third out last year. So we don't have to split necessarily, you see good competition at both. But that's the, and that's what Sean and I talked about when we were discussing meetings and this whole possibility, you know, showed up this year, that it is...
Is there a threshold number, and you, you may, you probably know better than anybody else, wherein one would have to have two coaches, or is it just based on the general part? Or do you know?
Yeah, that's a hard one for me because I also coach club where I got 100 kids, so 100 is exaggerating there, we only had 65 this year.
I think you're probably looking at that point of clarification from either Sean or MHSA directly to see what kind of requirement...
Yeah, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot at all.
Yeah, no, no, it's fine, they're valid questions, and they're questions Sean has discussed in length the last three weeks.
And so in your mind, to your mind, because you're the focus of this, in terms of, what is the, what would the advantage to waiting be?
The advantage would be the mental health of the kids right now.
Why, I guess that would be.
We're one team, I don't want to throw them under the bus, but when I let them know we might be splitting, I had 12 girls say, "Well, we're not coming back then." I don't want to say that's on me, because I tell them, "You were, you're just being emotional," because girls overthink everything, no offense, but you do.
I don't follow, I mean, I guess I don't understand why, so, but you're saying they're presently, how could it be the same, I mean, they're presently separate? Or parallel?
There is a change of a different coach, I guess I would say, that's where that comes from. That's inevitable, that's just like going from a different teacher to a different teacher, different employer to a different employer. You know, your manager gets a different role in the work and all of a sudden you have a new boss, there's no difference, but I guess that might answer your question.
No, I think so, I just, I'm trying to understand, like, how the, like, it clearly aroused a lot of emotions in the community. And I heard from a lot of people in the community, and I like, I didn't really understand it, and I don't, so.
Well, come know the wrestling.
But in terms of, in terms of, so eventually, so that, eventually it will be split.
Eventually. And Dan and Sean can talk to you more about that.
Yeah, maybe that, yeah, that's, I don't, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I was just trying to figure out.
Yeah, I think that's the, my understanding is we're going to have to rip this Band-Aid off at some point. This, we just aren't necessarily convinced that this is the right time to do it, and we don't have to do it yet. So we're gonna, that's where the recommendation's coming from. Tim's been a great employee, reliable coach, works closely with the kids, spends time here on his own time, helping kids out with other parts of their lives, so that's, that's a concern too, is severing that relationship, so that's, that's the reason for the recommendation tonight.
Are there any questions, comments from the board? Questions or comments from the public? Yeah, please.
I just, I'm...
Stitch it for the record, you can please stitch it in.
Yep, I'm Megan Hernandez. Let's see, I just have it written down because I am a horrible public speaker, so...
That's all right.
Yeah, okay. My name is Megan Hernandez, this fall I will have two boys attending the high school and a daughter that will be starting sixth grade. They have all spent the majority of their lives as competitive wrestlers. My husband is a wrestling coach and I currently sit on the board for a wrestling club in the area. I am here to hopefully bring some awareness to the fact that we need, we need a dedicated boys and a dedicated girls' head coach for the coming season. Separate coaching staff for boys and girls allows her practices to be tailored to the specific needs and development of both male and female wrestlers. It can allow the coaches to devote their full attention to the development and skills, the development, developing the skills and strategies needed for each program, leading to stronger teams. Having separate team coaches can be highly beneficial, leading to increased participation and can enhance athlete development and overall program growth. So we just briefly spoke on that, but we were talking about how there's some instances where the girls are in different locations than boys, and that's only going to increase they're left without a head coach, whether it's the boys without a head coach or the girls without a head coach. These are some numbers, and they probably alter throughout the year as some kids, you know, dropped off teams, but, so, a couple of weeks ago or recently, there was an article in the newspaper stating that Helena and Capital had decided to hire on a girls' head coach, and their numbers for girls are significantly smaller than ours, where Capital High had eight girls, and Helena had seven girls, and we had 17, 18. So as you can see, the girls' numbers at the other schools are significantly different than ours get, they have dedicated to move forward on separate coaching staff. MHSA rules state that they have to be separated by 2028, and my question is why we're waiting when we have these numbers? So a couple of weeks ago, emails were sent out stating teams needed to be separated, and that the head coach should be focusing on his efforts to coach the girls, and so, and that's fine. My question is, if we know it's inevitable, then why are we not moving in that direction and holding ourselves back? The wrestling program is only growing, this year, this coming year, I think, we're losing, I don't know how many kids graduated this year, but it wasn't a ton, maybe one or two, but the number of incoming freshmen is, is going to be large, as we've seen, a lot of these kids are, you know, we're coaching eighth graders. A lot of these kids are, you know, we're coaching eighth graders that are going to be freshmen next year. So. The, the sheer numbers are saying that we need more coaching staff. The program deserves a dedicated head coach on both sides to ensure they are succeeding in skill levels. They also, the kids also deserve a constant presence of a head coach to look, look up to for their high school careers. A lot of the ki, these kids have been wrestling since they were very young and are potentially looking at getting scholarships to attend college to further their futures in wrestling. Our kids deserve the best opportunities to succeed and grow in athletics. And thank you for taking the time to hear my concerns regarding this.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other questions, comments from the public? Yeah.
Mr. Share, is that kind of you?
That's all right.
Yeah, I'm Travis Kirchdorfer and I kind of wrote mine down too. My big question was, you know, kind of why wait for the inevitable thing to happen? I'm, I'm proud of you guys for even bringing this up. I think it's really awesome that we're having a discussion about it. Civil discussion, I think that's important. And we're exploring an important change. And while change can be challenging, it's clear that putting our students first is always the right choice. It's always the right choice. Expecting one head coach to manage both teams, it really isn't fair to Tim or to the students. And I saw that last year where Tim had to be gone, coaching the girls and then we're without a head coach. And my son wrestles here. By bringing on a second head coach, we can ensure our wrestlers receive the dedicated attention they deserve, both in practice and in tournaments. I don't know if you guys knew this, but girls' wrestling was the fastest sport in the United States, the fastest growing sport in the United States last year. I mean, it's, it's picking up a lot of speed. UFC has to do with a lot of that too, just, just girls being, wanting to compete. So it's crucial that we have the right support and strategy in place. This will give East Helena's youngest athletes the best possible shot at bringing home state championships, which is really the goal of my son and probably everybody else in here. You know, we want to see our kids do that, but also our club. And I know that East Helena has been, I mean, it's like, we're rallying for something awesome to happen. And we know that there's budget constraints and, you know, it's money and we understand that. We're saying yes to this, yes to this, you know, concerning teachers coming in and that. But why not just make the decision and, and, and hire it and see how it goes? So thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any others?
I, I've mentioned the money, like what is the money difference?
Between a head coach and an assistant coach?
So I mean, and, and this might be a question in general, there's a bunch of, there's already, I, I don't know if the overall number of coaches would change?
So we had discussed adding at least one, if not two additional assistants, depending on numbers, when the program gets going next winter. It's, it's knocking on the door of that. The, the discussions that I've had with Sean is that I want to see the assistant coaches target, assigned and dedicated to one side or the other. So they're not having to split between the boys and the girls' sides. And so the kids know who their contacting coach is. But ultimately, those decisions about the staffing, coaching staff is the head coach, you know, runs their staff. And so I know Tim and Sean have had some conversations about what that could look like. I definitely have discussed with Sean that we're going to need at least one additional staff member, if not two. And, and then that, eventually when that split happens, those people will already be on staff. It's just that the signing assistant coaches and how many we can have, most of my head coaches want more, more assistance, more assistance. And we have to try to be fair to all the sports and activities when we, when we dedicate resources and assets to any program. So we're just trying to be mindful of that and, and fair about it. You've heard me say it before, but we're still dealing with just the growth of the high school overall. We do have most of our, or maybe not most of our sports, but probably close to half of our sports have one combined coach for boys and girls, like swimming or track. And what else? Cross-country. And those programs are growing too. Particularly cross-country, I think has the potential to really take off within the next year or two with some strong leadership. And there's possibility that in, you know, three to five or seven years, we'll have to look at splitting that one too. Not necessarily because MHSA is telling us to, but just because the, the different sides of it deserve the attention. So that's, those are the decisions that we're trying to make and navigate. And also, you know, assign people in the places where they're going to be the, the most successful. And, 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 and in this instance, Tim knows the program well. He's done a good job for us and so that's, that's where we're coming from with that.
One question I had for you, Tim, is like, literally, it seems like if you loved coaching, like, are you going to end up, as the program gets bigger and you have all these assistant coaches split? Are you basically going to be an administrator? Like, do you, and do you want to be worried about that too?
I'm not a manager.
I don't mean that, I mean, I mean that.
No, that's a fair question.
I very, I, I value your dedication to it. I'm like, man, like maybe we're not giving you a fair opportunity by like, I assume, and that's, I can't ask you whether you would coach one of them if, if it were there.
I would not, because when I had a meeting with Sean, he said that I needed to choose. And I let the team know, well, it's going to, because it wasn't fair to them for me to keep them in the dark. That's how I felt. These kids are actually my family, so. And I didn't give Sean the decision when he actually asked for it because I found it very hard to make. I originally had a decision and lots of thought and prayer went into it and thinking about what, like Megan said, what's coming up. Great talent's coming up on the boys' side. And I let Sean know that I would take over the girls in the future if needed or, you know, if that's the plan. That, maybe I'm over speaking, Mr..
No, you're, no, this is exactly what I wanted to know.
That is the plan for me next year is I will take over the girls. We have a plan together for the boys' side if it all works out with the new assistants. And there's not going to be a whole lot of change, I don't believe, but it will be changed and change is good. We need change. But this year is like Dan said, it's not quite the time, in his opinion, or several people's, but some people think yes, but you're always going to have that.
So one of the, and one of the things that's difficult here is like, I would love to hear from Sean.
Right.
And like, I mean, I, there's certainly a part of me that would like to postpone this thing and say like, I, I guess I was surprised at the amount of community outreach I got and in terms of, mostly to the point where I was like, wow, I would, I would like, I'd like to, I'd like to see what the plan is. And I don't want to micromanage. God knows that I know nothing about sports or wrestling. But, but in terms of, oh, like what is the plan and like, I'd like to see those, I guess I would like to see those reasons in some respects. Because, and I think because, as Tim pointed out, like it impacts people so strongly. And I look at the repercussions of some other coaching decisions we've had and I'm like, I don't know if I made the right point. So, and, and that case, like, the last thing I want to do is, it has to be unanimous. The last thing I want to do is vote no on Tim. I would, I would be inclined to put it off and just like, say like, what's the plan for fairness, but whatever.
Okay, I will do a little clarification. You may have noticed that this is somewhat unusual with the way that we're approaching this discussion. When Dan and I were developing the agenda and I was trying to figure out, and my apologies would go out to you too, more than anything. Because the motion actually is to hire you as head coach. The other ramifications of having a, a girls' coach and a male or a boys' coach are totally separate conversations. But we did receive enough conversation, enough discussion from people that I thought that was probably productive to actually have this conversation right now anyway. The motion that we have on hand has nothing to do with whether there is a girls' coach or a boys' coach. It has to do with whether or not we are going to hire that individual as our heads, head coach. If the board so chooses, we can make another separate discussion at a later meeting to be able to place it on the agenda, to direct the superintendent and/or the athletic director to seek and do, hire another coach if we, if that's something that we would like to do. And then at that point in time, the athletic director would end up deciding which one of the two individuals became the head coach of it or whatever. We could do that now or we could wait until MHSA requires it next year or any number of things. I just don't want it to dilute the idea that right now, the motion as it stands is that whether or not we are going to hire that individual for a one-year contract as a wrestling coach. So I hope that that clarifies.
It did not.
It did not.
No, so because it, because, so you're suggesting that, it's weird because we're sitting here talking about.
That's right.
Like, yeah, but you're suggesting that we could hire Tim as a head coach? And with the expectation that in, with, in another month with more information and perhaps the input of Sean Mergle, we would either decide, we, we could have another motion to hire another head wrestling coach and then deal with that then?
Potentially.
Potential.
Potentially, not necessarily a guarantee that we would do that at all, but we could do that if we do.
Well, that's, I was trying to ask about budget, but I can't really figure out what it costs.
Yeah, so I don't know that you're, if you split the programs, I don't know that you're going to be looking at a lot more bodies or salaries than if you keep them together.
That, again, that's, like, is this a $1,500 difference or something?
Right.
And I guess one of the questions I would have associated with, or, you know, that was on, and I don't know numbers. This, again, this would be another good question for Sean, is that if we do that, then are we willing to consider having separate coaches for the swim team membership? If the number's going up. Tennis team, are we going to do that for the golf? Are we going to do that? Because there's a lot of other sports that have a singular head coach. And so it may not be limited. I believe that the numbers of the wrestling team would probably indicate that it's probably justified. But I don't know how that looks as compared to the number of assistant coaches, those other programs, and what kind of dedication they have to either the girls' side or the boys' side.
And this will be a moot point in a year, right?
Yes, then it's, then, then it's an MHSA department.
And that's based on numbers or is that based on?
I have no idea what MHSA.
I have to educate myself.
I don't know.
Yeah, there, there, you know, there's some things I could speculate on, but I don't think it'd be fair to even speculate on the rationale behind it.
You said 28, so you have this year and next year.
Yeah, 27 is the split, correct?
I believe so, I can't remember.
Yeah. I can try and find that out for you for sure.
So if I want more information and, and want more opportu, like, I mean, this is the classic thing that happens, which is that sort of no one pays attention to what's going on. And I am guilty of this as well. And then all of a sudden, some, a decision is made when, and then people feel as though they're excluded from input on that decision, whether they were or not. And, and then all of a sudden, here we are and there's a lot of input to be added. But now whether, whether Mr. Mergle got all this input or not, I don't know. But if we're to, so I would like to pause, what would be the way, what would be the best way to do that? So I'm asking you as a procedural thing, so we could hire Tim as a head coach? And presumably then I could lobby to get another agenda item on.
Yeah, there's nothing in this motion that says we can't, that we're directing Tim to be hired as either boys or girls.
Just as a, as a head coach for the wrestling program?
We could further clarify in a later meeting that we want programs split.
Yeah.
Which then I think would be a, I think that would best be a combined motion at that point to be, split the program and hire a second head coach? And let the athletic director do the same in hiring and then directing which side goes where. That could be an avenue that happens in the next month.
Yeah.
Or, because I'm, I guess, and the reason why I'm saying that is, is my question is, is how long would it take, Ben? And this may be a Sean question. What would it take, Tim, more welcome to weigh in? What would it take to split the program and hire timeline wise? Like, because I don't want to have, you know, do we already let the chickens out the gate at this point for this year or not? I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, or can we still get the program split, get someone hired and still have meaningful practice, you know, support and everything before the, the season starts?
I think you could. Part of why we do our winter coach hiring now is summer workouts. So open gyms is a big part of that and I know Tim's probably got a plan already. So the longer we wait, the more detrimental that might be. And, yeah, did you want to comment on that?
No. It all depends, it just depends on how long you want, how much time you want to take to make the correct hire. You could shotgun this thing right through in a week. We've seen it done, it doesn't work. Yeah, open gyms start tomorrow. Summer camps, I mean. So in your estimation, it's critical that we at least get some hiring done. And I guess maybe, Dan, that's a better question to you, is that it's critical to hire now to get something started? And then we can split and/or stay the course for the next couple of meetings or meeting.
And, but also, it's kind of already been made a point that the students don't necessarily want to split. And so giving them time to acclimate to that idea, I think is futile for their, like, how they're going to progress.
But have we really heard from the students or have we, like?
Students telling their coach that they've been working with for however long, saying that they're not going to show up, I think that's a big voice.
Like Martin, I have received also a ton of communication from parents. So I think we have to take everything with a grain of salt. I mean, not that I don't trust you, but that's not what I'm saying. I just think that, I don't think we have all, I don't think we have enough information.
And particularly, I, so.
I think we have enough information to decide whether Tim could be head coach and then decide down the line.
Agreed, agreed.
And have the students come in and voice their opinions.
Agreed, I totally agree with that, agree with that.
You do not.
No, I, I, a head coach, yes, I would love, but I do not know whether, whether, I, there's nothing, I would like to hire Tim as a head coach.
Absolutely.
Whether that is for a unified program or a split program, I don't know. I don't think we've gotten enough information and I don't, and, and Sean Mergle being the, the big, the big question. And also, so I've just had an onslaught of information from.
That is the motion that's on the table.
Motion is to hire Tim.
So how would I, as a, or, I mean, if I want to force the issue to, to have it come up again, we can, I can deny it.
Yeah, if we don't, then it would, it would go and we would.
Which I don't really want to do.
At that point in time, if there was a no vote on it, it was not unanimous, then we would, it would be incumbent upon Dan to solicit applications for a new head coach for wrestling.
Okay, and so, but any two trustees could get it on the agenda for the next month, right?
Yeah, I'm not that big of a stick for when it comes to that, but yes, you're correct.
Okay, so then, then I, then that would, that would work for me. I just want to make sure that this is, this issue is, to be fair to everybody, I want to make sure this issue's, I want Tim to have a job as a head coach because I appreciate his dedication and his work, but I'd like to have an opportunity for everyone to have a say in it and, and basically get some more information. So I.
Are there any other questions, comments from the board?
My name's Jeremy Hernandez. So my question is, is, I wasn't even under the impression we were in the midst of hiring a coach. Like, this was all supposed to be whether the team was split or not. There was nothing on our, on our, on our school page, nothing. And IR, I don't know who the hell reads the IR anymore. Like, was it on the school, was it on the school website that we were hiring a, a new wrestling coach?
We're not hiring a new wrestling coach, Jeremy.
So what, what is it?
So we're hiring our current coach, we're renewing his contract, we're hiring him back for another year.
Doesn't that, does that go out to the public or no? Besides the IR?
Well, it's posted in the school board agenda, which is on our website. If we're not advertising for a new, yeah, we do, we do a posting every year for every season, so people can apply.
Can I answer, can you answer that?
Yeah.
The reason it's in the IR is because of me, because I'm a board member, I'm a spouse of who's being hired within the district. So anytime there's any spouse. So anytime there's any spouse, children, whatever, of a board member, it gets posted into the IR. That's why it was in the IR.
That's why this was, I, I, I thought you were talking about a.
So this would be posted no different than a teacher's job opening?
Right.
Oh, okay.
Or anything like that?
Good clarification, Stacy. Yeah?
Yeah, my name is Kailene Rude. I have kids in the school district. I have one that's graduated after UBS, and then one that is currently in high school. I know we've had a lot of discussion about the program, but I also think it's important to have somebody in the room to talk about Tim and who he is as a parent of wrestler. And so I just wanted to offer to the board that, like, unbelievable character, great man, does a great job communicating to parents, as you heard some of today, right? I think that's why we're here and we're so invested, is because it keeps us in the loop. Um, and so I would just offer in terms of, like, no matter what team, how big or how small it is, or whether it's male and female or combined, I just know from our perspective that, um, he's a great asset to our district. And I think, um, we wouldn't be making a great mistake if he wasn't a part of whatever the long-term solution is for wrestling.
Thank you. Any additional questions, comments, either from the board or the public? Great discussion.
Can you clarify your last name, please?
Yeah, Rude, like the baby.
Okay.
Oh, thank you, sorry.
As a previous, I'm not, I'm still a parent of a student, but he also wrestled. And I would agree with her statement that Tim does an outstanding job and holds the kids to a level that most coaches, in my opinion, in the past haven't, maybe haven't, um, meaning that they have to be in practice at ti- on time, actually early. Um, just his rules, they have to, like, meet all those. The fact that he has that many students that are meeting all those requirements that show up every day to practice is huge. And he's very good at overseeing the program and trying to be there for each kid and whatever they may have going on. So that's as a parent, not as a board member. My kid has graduated, so, but that's past.
Yeah.
So I just want to clarify here. Nobody's stating that he is not a great coach. I actually think him, when he picked the girls, was the best decision. Like, he is a very good girls' wrestling coach. I've been around Tim for years. I've coached with him. Like, he's a very good girls' coach. Nobody's saying that he should not be a coach. All we are saying as parents of wrestlers is, all the kids deserve the same nurturing, right? Like, the boys deserve a coach to coach them, the girls deserve a coach to coach them, especially when it comes down to tournaments that are split in different schools.
And the numbers.
And the numbers, and, and I'm not going to lie, I, I can put my kid on the spot here. My kid was very, and like Tim was saying, that it's an emotional sport. So when my kid got the email saying he picked the girls, why do you want to wrestle for a guy that picked the girls? You know, you want to wrestle for a guy that wants to coach your team, and you're, you know, and if you're going to be separated and you're not going to have a head coach at the tournament to coach you, that's just the point I want to make, is that you want to wrestle for somebody that wants to coach you. And it's not his fault, but he was put in a position to choose, and that's the choice he made, and.
Which I can see that the girls really would connect and want, I mean, when he says that, you know, the students want him to stay, but I don't think that's the accurate depiction of all the boys. I think that's the accurate depiction of the girls. Like, I think if there was a forum for the kids to come and talk, and the male athletes were able to talk, I, I don't think it would be the same input that the girls would, would relay.
That's why he has a decision for the girls, it's great.
Is simply, when I took over the boys, there were six of them. Six boys on a whole team of high school. I built it up thirty-five plus strong. Without a senior class, this year I'd have all four. I took the girls because I didn't want to see that program drop, and all of a sudden, you don't need a girls' coach, do you?
Yeah.
I chose that because I built the boys, and I knew I could build the girls.
And Tim, I'm, I'm saying on behalf of the board, you do not have to justify your decision, but whatever, that's, that's.
I did it for the best of the community. My own son is on the boys'.
And I'm now going to probably tighten this up now a little bit, because I believe everybody's had an opportunity to express their opinion that's here in the room. Um, so we do have a motion on the floor. Are there any additional questions or comments on the motion, which is to hire Tim Baird as our wrestling coach?
So I want to clarify, I thought that the motion was to hire him as a, and wrestling coach.
As a what, I'm sorry?
A head wrestling coach, not the wrestling coach.
Uh, what did I say? I don't know what the, I don't know exactly what that term was, if we're going to do that, I, I don't recall what that is.
I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to put you in the box, Scott, but the, I want to ensure that the motion leaves it open.
It says in the, in the student's rec, or superintendent's recommendation to approve hiring Tim as our head boys' girls' wrestling coach. I don't know if the motion that was made, uh, who made the motion originally? Jen, do you have it?
I have Tyra.
Tyra, and do you recall exactly the exact words you used there?
Uh, I said some word, which was the language that was provided, was to hire Tim Baird as the head wrestling coach. So.
So that's what the motion is, and that was what was.
So will that, so in, this, once again, would that forestall hiring an additional head wrestling coach?
Because if we change course and say, split the program, we'll need a second.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Scott, I didn't mean to stop, I just.
No, that, that's absolutely right. This is not, nothing's going to change at this point in time. I mean, we, we've got a coach. If we hire another individual tomorrow, that's going to be up to our administration to divide and set on however they want to split those two individuals out. So, you know, that, unless, unless we get into the, after we hire him, unless we get in the course of micromanaging the, the, the distribution.
I'm not at all, but V means the, it doesn't mean A.
Right.
And so I'm not, like, that's problematic.
But your wrestling position is not split.
But if I taste thing.
Apparently you're not split.
What's that?
Well, you're apparently not split.
Okay. I, I get, as, as long as I have, as long as I don't, as long as that's, that's the way it will be seen in the future.
Gordon, if it could, if need be, I'd support you, as a trustee.
No, and I'm not, like, I just, like, when you hire the, like, presume that you're not having, hiring a second?
We can amend the motion.
Right, until another option comes up.
Or we can vote it. If it doesn't pass, we can have a new motion. It's an action item, you don't have to just have one motion on an action.
No, we can have, we can have a substitute motion.
I could also vacate the motion, or we could provide a substitute motion.
Yeah.
I, I would, so, in what, or.
Jen, I would rescind my motion.
And who, Dan, Stacy, or who had the second?
Me.
I was trying to.
I don't rescind my motion.
She will not.
Okay.
So.
I will make an amendment, if it would make you happy, that we can discuss this further. Like amendment, meaning we hired Tim as a head coach, and down the way, when we're able to hire another coach, because that's half the battle too, is, is got to be in the budget. It can't just be, so it's got to be in the budget. And when we have the ability, or they are ready to hire a second coach, or to separate the teams, then we will bring that to the board at that time. So can we make that as an amendment?
I don't even really think that it's necessary to make the amendment, as long as there's an understanding.
Because it would be brought forward at any time.
Correct.
So is it, Martin, is it the head coach, is it, is it the?
No, that's the only concern I have, is that, is that if, if, my presumption is, I would like to hear more about the split, and perhaps hiring a second one. So if we've now hired the head coach, I don't want to forestall the opportunity to do that, that's all. That's the only thing. I would like to hire Tim as a head coach, and maybe it'll be of the whole program, and maybe it'll be of half. And I don't know, because I don't feel like I had enough information prior to, prior to.
Up, up until we, if we split the program, then the, it is the appropriate terminology. Once it's split, then we have a vacancy, based on if we have the budgetary authority, everything to split the program. So that would be a great discussion to have, I think, at the next meeting with the, or does this need to go to committee? Could this be, no? Okay, so, um, I, I think we're good.
Okay.
I totally.
Yeah, 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 I'm not, I'm just trying to make sure that I'm.
I, based on the fact that we have just a single program right now, but, because we don't have to, so making a, a motion that says A head coach versus B head coach, I don't think it's going to change that. Because then, once the circumstances change, so. Are we, are we good?
Yeah, I'm good, yeah, okay.
Then we still have our motion on the table, since it was not.
Yep, last call, then. Any other additional questions or comments? Saying, I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no, and reflect that Stacy Baird has abstained from vote. Motion's approved. Tim, congratulations, you are, you're, you're our coach for another year. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is our consideration of our summer school program updates, or actually an update on our summer school program.
All right, so summer school kicks off this week, actually. We have two administrators, uh, who are staying on and helping us this summer run our summer programs. Uh, Mr. Sommerfeld will be taking care of the elementary, the K-five program. And Lindsay will be the boss of the sixth grade through eleventh grade program. And I just asked Gus and Lindsay to share a little bit of information with you about the number of students they hope to serve, the schedule, types of activities, what's going to be going on, location, all that kind of stuff. So Gus, you want to take the one?
Yeah, um, so we have a hundred and forty-five students, um, that are signed up right now. That's up pretty significantly since years past, or the high interest, particularly in the K-two realm, just because Jump Start offered a free program, so there's no tuition, as we've done in the, in the past. Uh, we're going to start off Wednesday, so Wednesday here, um, at Prick Repair. And we will wrap up on, um, July twenty-third. It's a six-week, six-half week program, it's thirty days for students. Um, we run it eight to four, and, um, Thursdays, we try to allocate, um, for our field trips, um, to offer more of an enrichment, a set of things for, for students. We've got three field trips scheduled right now, one to the First Peoples Buffalo Jump up in, um, near Olm. Another one to the Missouri River, Missouri River, Missouri River Headwaters, uh, State Park, over here, Three Forks. And then one to the downtown scavenger hunt, and we'll wrap that off with a, with a movie in the, in the theater. Um, and then Friday, we are going to continue to do our swim lessons. Um, they are, the East Tonne Pool is accommodating our hundred and forty-five kids. I was kind of nervous that, about that for a little bit, but, uh, the way I was able to schedule it, we were able to separate it out. So they'll get swim lessons again, um, this year, free of cost, which was really neat. Um, yeah, we've got nine teachers with four par professionals, so it's a pretty healthy staff. Um, and, um, we're, we're looking forward to it. I've got a lot of veteran folks that have done it before, so it's not a lot of newbies that I have to train up for our summer program, which is really refreshing, too, if people are coming back to work.
Thanks. Any questions for Gus? Sounds like an exciting time.
And Lindsay's got some stuff.
Yeah, Lindsay.
All right, mine sounds as exciting as Gus's. Ours will be thirty-two middle schoolers will be coming to summer school, and Ms. Walsh will be running that with the para. In the high school, we have, um, a hundred and forty-one students taking transformational PE, um, which is pretty cool. No, that is a lie, don't listen to that. Hundred and twelve kids taking transformational PE. Um, some of them are juniors and seniors, so it'll be an elective form if they need it in the future. And then for the other ones, we have fifty-five kids taking classes, um, to get either caught up where they were behind. And I think we have twenty-one that are doing transformational, um, English and US History, or US Government.
What, what's transformational about?
Competency-based. So transformational learning is the state buzzword for competency-based education. So in a competency-based environment, we're making a determination about whether or not you get credit for the course based on your demonstration of your knowledge of the standards associated with the course, rather than the fact that you spent a hundred and eighty days in a classroom, which you can't do at a summer.
So is this in lieu, or is this?
So students who complete all these requirements satisfactorily would not have to, for instance, take freshman PE.
Oh, wow.
Right?
That's like a godsend.
So the, uh, and the PE, one of the PE teachers is teaching it. And this is a, so transformational learning is, it takes a lot of different forms. Um, under recently passed laws, we're allowed to award credit for kids if they can demonstrate competency or a basic, not a basic understanding, a thorough understanding of the standards associated with the program. So a lot of our student athletes in particular come to school multiple days per week to work out for their sport, um, under the supervision of our coaches and our PE teacher, uh, one of them in particular, Mr. Murray will be here. And so he, he will set up the additional learning requirements for the students to do in addition to the physical workouts, which would be part of your PE class anyway, um, to demonstrate that they have the knowledge, that they won't have to take freshman PE, so.
Cool.
Um, or sophomore PE, PE, which students are only required to have half-credit of sophomore PE. And then like Lindsay's saying, if they're a junior or a senior, they can count it as an elective credit if they were short on credits to graduate, which most of ours are not, but it's still an opportunity for them to, to earn that. And this, we do the same thing, like she's saying, with our English and government requirement, which sometimes frees up, um, our seniors in particular to have more time in their schedule to do things like dual-credit coursework or work-based learning.
Thank you.
Did I sum that up pretty well?
Perfect.
All right. And kids are given up a lot to participate in, you know, I mean, summer, they're spending a lot of time here, so.
Any other questions for Lindsay or Gus? In that discussion that I had last week with that forum or that conference, that was one area that they really focused on, is the summer school programs. They were saying that a lot of times that's the, the, the summer drop-off that we see every year is real. And when they're looking at test scores, they see that that's definitely, um, one of the areas that, um, they get pretty decent return on investment.
That's cool.
Yeah. Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, then we'll move on to item number six, which is our consideration of our next year's twenty-five, twenty-six school year bus route.
Okay, uh, the bus routes were in the supporting documents. Uh, I don't believe there's a ton of changes on them in terms of the basic destinations that the routes are going to. There are some minor tweaks within each route. Um, in the packet of routes that were submitted, um, there is the additional Route ten, which we also approved last year. Um, we, however, were not able to ever staff Route ten with a driver. Nick is pretty confident that he's going to be able to pull that off next year. Um, these need to be approved locally by the local board of trustees, and then Nick takes them to the county transportation committee, which meets, I believe, in about two weeks. And this is the basis of our per-student-per-mile funding reimbursement that we get from the state.
So before the board this evening, we have those routes, and I would recommend a motion to approve said routes.
What does it matter but pine cones spelled wrong?
Oh. So's Heron Creek.
Heron Creek and pine cones need to be corrected, Jen. Note to self.
I mean, it's spelled right, but it's actually pine cone is two, yeah, it's two words on the road.
Heron's spelled like that.
I make a motion to approve the routes as.
Thank you.
There's a motion from Tiffany to approve the routes as presented. Do I have a second? Yeah, a second from Mark, do you? Questions or comments for the board?
Sounds like the, the times are like, once they're put down, they're set in stone. And as someone who knows somebody who drove the bus, it sounds like some of the times are, like, really hard to get there, and does that cause?
So the drivers can.
Drive too fast and?
Yeah, the drivers can communicate with Nick about that. The, uh, and they do adjust them with parents sometimes. Uh, part of it is just history of when the bus is getting there.
Okay.
And part of it is our best estimate of when the bus will get there. Um, so, yeah, we can make tweaks and adjustments on those. The reimbursement comes.
It was related to me that it wasn't tweakable, and, and that they had to be at a certain spot at a certain time.
Mornings are more critical than afternoons, because if, you know, parents are counting on the bus at a certain time. And so they are trying to hit the mark in the morning.
Yeah.
But if there's a specific area.
But if there's a specific area that you'd like me to discuss with Nick, just send me an email later.
No, I mean, I have to ask.
Yeah, yeah, find out for me. Cause I've driven those routes, and I know what you mean. Sometimes it's like 7:37.
It was like getting from the high schools to the middle school in two minutes, and I was like, I don't think that's possible. Yeah, or whatever, so I'm like.
Especially once they go to crosswalks.
So anyways, I just was curious.
Good to know.
If it was, something about it was turned into Montana Highway Patrol too? Is that correct? Is that?
The routes?
Yeah, do they have that?
I do believe they review them. They wanna know where the stops are.
Okay.
Didn't we have to do that? Like, didn't there have to be like some?
The county reviews, the county transportation board.
Anyhow.
Any other questions, comments for the board? Questions or comments from the public? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no? Motion carries. Yeah, item number seven is our setting of fees for the 2025, 2026 year.
Okay, so this is an annual exercise that we go through in June. What I tried to do this year was pull in, it kinda became clear to me after two to three years of being the superintendent that we did not have all the fees in the list, and I'm still not sure that we have all the fees in the list, but I'm trying to get those in front of you guys so you can see what we charge and where we charge. The biggest thing that we added this year was the list of course fees at the high school, because I want the trustees to be aware that we do have fee-based course offerings at the high school that require students to use consumable supplies in large quantity, like your art classes, your carpentry classes, your welding classes. And usually, they're using the things in those quantities, and then they're taking it home with them when they're finished with the project. So by paying the fee, they're actually paying for the raw materials that they're utilizing. The ones in the right-hand column, if they're bold-faced, that means it's a change from last year. I tried to keep most of them pretty flat, given the fact that we got some funding from the legislature that we hadn't anticipated. And so that is true through most of it. The adjustments at the pay rate for classified subs, those subpositions have always paid at the starting rate of pay for the position, so that's why it says "or memorandum of understanding" or MOA after it, because once the MOA is approved, we'll adjust those pay rates accordingly, and I thought we could just accomplish that with one action tonight.
True.
And other than that, if you have questions about it, I can try to answer them.
I had two. One was, is there not, I thought there was a high school sports participation fee too.
It's on the top of the, well, it's on the top of the second page, student activity fee.
Oh, is it, does that mean participation? I didn't know what that meant.
And that's what that is.
And then?
And then the family max means if you have three kids in high school and you've paid $170 for your kids to participate, that's the max you're gonna have to pay this year, so.
Gotcha, and then this, welling, was there CTE money for materials? Like, I couldn't believe welling didn't go up.
So CTE money is used for equipment.
Oh.
They can't use it for supplies like Perkins and that kinda stuff. They can use it to buy a new welder, but they can't use it to buy welding rod or the metal that the kids are building stuff out of.
I thought it would've gone up more than that, because in the real world.
Right.
Then we got rid of like art courses, culinary arts, and intro to culinary, they're no charges?
Some of those are a little bit confusing, so Intro to Culinary and Culinary One, wait, Culinary Arts and Intro to Culinary, I believe the courses aren't being offered next year, is why they say zero. Is that accurate?
Yeah, Intro to Culinary is not something we offer, foods for like this, that first introductory class, so it's just changing in course names.
So really, the fees are staying fairly flat. Actually, the.
Prices going up.
Yeah, the one is going from 15 to 30. I understand. Well, we don't, we're not offering the Intro to Culinary anymore, so there's not a $15 fee anymore.
I struggle every year with the all-service turf price tag.
Where is it?
On the last page.
Turf athletic field, oh.
Is it, my question is, is how many opportunities do we miss out on? Especially like tournaments, now that Carroll has a turf field. I mean, before, we were one of the only ones, or the only one in Helena, East Helena surrounding areas. And I feel like we've missed out on opportunities for some of that, so is it more beneficial to do instead of per hour, maybe a weekend fee or a tournament fee?
Well, the, so when we, when it says all services, that means we probably have three of our hourly employees on staff for most of the time. It takes two people to run the clock, and three sometimes if it's football, depending on the level of competition. So that's part of the reason. There's the $150 per game practice fee, which is use, if you're not using the services of like running, say the small fry game is the best one that I can think of. In terms of people asking, and I can't say for sure, but I think that like when rugby does a game, they use just flip score on the side and have their own people do it.
Sure.
But it's not like you can just put their own people on the clock, cause you actually have to know. I don't even know how to run the clock.
So like lacrosse tournaments, or, I don't know much about lacrosse, but baseball tournaments, cause I have a baseball kid. We, the team, the home team runs the clock, and they're not always easy clocks, like we, the vigilante field, it's not an easy clock. We learn how to run it. So can we cut back on some of the staff that has to be there if it's required that the teams learn how to run it? Or the tournament director?
I could, I, we can have that discussion with the athletic director. The scoreboard itself, I could take you in there to show you the equipment. You've probably been in that room. I'm not sure I'd be comfortable just turning anybody's mom or dad loose in that room. I mean, the sound system alone is, I think it was $80,000, and the equipment's pretty steep, so. That part of it, it's like, you know, if you wanna come in here and use the field, that's $150 an hour rate. If you want the score clocked on and all the bells and whistles and us to announce your kids when they come out and all that kinda stuff. Actually, I think small fry use their own announcer. I'm not 100% sure. I could check. We can definitely come back and revisit it if you want to. I could have a conversation with Sean.
So even like a tournament though, if they didn't want to use all of the bells and whistles, are they still bound to pay $150 an hour? So you have a tournament that runs from Friday through Sunday. That's a lot of hours.
So the rate is per game or practice? I don't know if there's a weekend rate on that.
And that's what I'm curious.
Like, they have a tournament and there's 10 games, and that'd be $1,500 if it's $150 per game. That's how I would interpret that.
It's not the hours that the field is being rented, it's per game? So like if somebody says, I want the field to be 8:00 AM to Friday to Sunday.
That's how I understand it.
Night at 10:00?
Yeah, 150 per game or per practice. So like if you're, like sometimes, well, Carroll has called us before they had their field to say, our field's frozen solid and our boys can't practice on it for the playoff game, can we use your field? So they wanted three practices here, we charged $150 for practices. That's how I understand that. But I can ask Sean to explain more about that. The concern that we have with the turf field is when it was installed, we were told plan on $500,000 to replace it in 10 years. And whether or not it's really gonna be worn out in 10 years is debatable, cause it doesn't see the same kinda traffic. It's like an NFL field, right, which they probably do theirs every year, for all we know. Sean shared a little bit of information with me last week that Western just had their football field replaced down at Dillon, and it was closer to $800,000 now.
And how long did that last?
That one sounded like it was in the eight to 10-year range, actually.
And how much do they use it?
I think they use it quite a bit. So, yeah, so I don't know. I mean, right now, in that turf replacement fund, we built up about $150,000, and we're four years into it, so that's where our concern is. So we can lower the rate and maybe get more rental and actually generate more income off of it. So it's just a matter of trying to find that.
So does that, does that, does that income from rental go towards replacement?
Goes to a separate fund for turf replace, I think that's what it's called, actually.
So like if you were to lower it and get more generated, you would potentially build that faster?
Yeah, it's worth a conversation, for sure. So I can, I can let you know that we revisit it.
I would imagine that UV is equal to use as well.
It probably does break it down. I mean, I'm not a turf expert. The other problem that you have with it is.
Neither the plastic guys.
Is the, it's actually loaded with rubber pellets, tiny little rubber pellets, and they get compacted. Yeah, and then they end up in your shoes, in your house, in your mom's car, and your hair.
No, it'll be, it'll be a million, it'll be over a million dollars.
I would expect it.
It's probably 1.2 now.
So we're looking for a deep-pocketed sponsor who wants their name sewed in the middle of it. Other questions?
Are there any areas in here, you said that consumables cannot be part of that, but is there anything that is applied to, from the advanced opportunities grants in the course fees?
I don't know the answer to that. We haven't?
And I don't mind having some skin in the game.
Yeah.
When it comes to that, you know, that way it's, you know, people, if they've got some funds into it, tend to take better care of tools and things of that nature. But by the same token, I'm not sure. I mean, there's a lot of flexibility that we have associated with advanced opportunities grant that.
Yep. Let me, it's actually pretty specific what you can and can't use it for. So let me find that guidance from OPI and send it to you.
Okay. And at that point, this doesn't, it doesn't necessarily change the discussion that we're having this evening. We can still set the charges based on that, but I'd be kinda curious to see if there's applicability associated with it. Okay, any other thoughts, questions? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the fee schedule as presented. I'm moved. Motion from Time Route, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Tiffany. Additional questions or comments from the board? Additional questions or comments from the public? Yeah?
My name's Juliette Han. I'm a parent of three kids in the district, and head coach at the high school for the girls' flag football team. Guess it's a bad time to ask for a turf football field, carrying a million dollars. No, just kidding, that's not what I wanna talk about, but I'm here tonight speaking as a board member for the Helles Small Fry Association. So anybody that's not familiar with that, we're the leading nonprofit organization in Helena for middle school football. We have fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders coming through that program. And so I just wanted to touch on a little bit more about what Stacy talked about with the rental fee for the flag foot, or sorry, for the football field. We consider every year where our championship is gonna be played, we have three games that we play every year in October, and typically those are held, those, that Thursday when the teachers are, I don't know what it's called, in service?
Yeah.
But it's in October. And the last, let's see, four years, four years ago, three years ago, we did have the games here in East Helena. Two years ago, we decided to move that game to Vigilante Stadium. And then last year, we moved it to Carroll College because of scheduling issues with the high school football teams playing at Vigilante Stadium. The biggest concern that came up in our board meeting was the cost of renting the field in East Helena. There's a lot of board members who would love to see alternating years, us play in East Helena one year and play Vigilante Stadium one year, and, you know, back and forth. There's a lot of rivalry going on right now, especially with those middle school teams, and they eat it up, like they love it. They come here, they go, you know, even if they're not playing in the championship game, they love coming to those games. There's a lot of pride in hosting those events. And Helena, Helles School District charged us $0 to host all three games at their stadium. And last year, Carroll College charged us $400 for the entire night to utilize their facilities, including their concession stands. So I just wanted to provide a perspective from the Helles Small Fry Board members, you know, our, from our things that we're considering, and also just to give you guys an idea of what other venues that are similar to East Helena are charging us or not charging us. And obviously, we're getting those benefits to hosting an event like this. Obviously, Helena brings like community engagement, and like I said, the kids are, they're excited about it. And then also from a, from a coaching perspective for the high school teams, like our kids could run the concession stands. That brings in more money for our programs at the high school. A lot of times, we don't even have concessions open, and they're, we're having events here, and I get questions all the time, why are concessions not open? I don't know, I don't run concessions, but we have, like, we do volunteer our time, and I know there was a rugby tournament that the girls' flag football team ran concessions. We made, I don't know, a couple hundred dollars, you know, here, a couple hundred dollars here and there. Brings in enough money to pay for a few things. Anyway, so I just wanted to offer that perspective. We also are starting a girls' flag football middle school program this year, which I'm super excited about, obviously, cause we have our own program here at the high school. So I think it's just perfect timing for East Helena to reconsider our fees. We are looking at where is the board gonna host championship games for that girls' league? But at this point, we, East Helena has like priced itself out of the market. It's just not competitive. And we, we're nonprofit, we don't have the money, we can't afford to pay $1,200 bucks for championship games. So, anyway, I digress. That's my perspective as a small fry board member.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing. Any additional questions, comments from the public? Saying none. I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no?
No.
Yeah, Stacy is no. Okay, next on the item is an information item associated with our final accreditation steps.
So the short part of this is that we met accreditation. If you look through the document from OPI, they, they give you the points possible that you can earn on each rubric for the standard, and then the points that the district earned. And then our total points give us regular accreditation, which regular accreditation doesn't sound too spectacular, but that's as good as you can actually get. What I didn't do, and I forgot to do, or I got busy dealing with commercial energy this afternoon, was bring all the ARM rules that these reference to, so that you could refer to those. You can tell what some of these are about when you read the reviewer comments. The first two pages relate to the district. In most areas, we got all the points we could earn or close to all the points we could earn, except for Standard B, which I don't know what it is, so I can't tell you right now. Not, the schools all received four out of four, in most of the areas, I think the high school and middle school each had one, three. So the, the basic summary is that we're doing a great job in the eyes of OPI. This is a real animal to submit. The new process was supposed to be simpler and easier for district administrators to submit than the old process, but having done both, I'm not sure that I agree with that assessment. And what I will do is I can send you this document that's in your packet as a live PDF, so you, these will all be clickable links to refer to the ARMs if you wanna go back and look at those. I, sorry, I meant to bring those tonight so that I could tell you specifically what they were referring to.
Dan, I'll tell you this right now. I actually took delivery of train to hunt that down through the ARM this afternoon.
It's a challenge, isn't it?
Well, it talks about these standards, A, B, C, D listing on it or whatever, but the, they don't really give specific.
Right.
What, what it's actually talking about. It's all generic. And I'm wondering, is there something else that's not part of the ARM that you, that they use to clarify that?
Yeah, I might be able to find the act, the original template document to share with you, so let me see what I can do.
Yes, number one, I'm wondering what we're being greeted on.
Right.
And then number two, what are we expected to approve upon if we get a, you know, something that's not a four out of four for instance?
Right, cause some of them, they wrote comments on the side.
Yeah.
But then some of them, they didn't, where we didn't score as high as we needed to.
Great, I'll see, I'll see what I can find for you. I, historically, we take these accreditation documents, throw them in there, and they're pretty self-explanatory. And then when I was reviewing the packet, getting ready for the meeting, I was like, well, this isn't gonna be super helpful to anybody because it just refers to administrative rules. And these administrative rules, the 55 in the middle of most of them refers to what we call Chapter 55, which are the basic standards for K-12 education in Montana. The OPI went through and revised all of Chapter 55 a couple of years ago, and now a lot of times when you look like on the Secretary of State's website at Chapter 55. And now a lot of times when you look like on the Secretary of State's website, at chapter fifty-five, most of it says rescinded. And then it's kind of hard to find where the new version is, which was some of the practice that I was doing. But let me, let me work on that for you. And if you want, Scott, we may even want to bring this back as an old business item in July or August, just for a little more clarification. Because it 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 is important.
Yeah.
The the good news is we're accredited. And the other part of that is this was the first year that we had to report on the two-two-seven middle and high school. That, and that was a big part of what Lindsay and I were were working on last winter is getting that done.
Yeah, we could have got all the four boards, but we decided we need a some group.
Right. So we got one three.
Because do we submit our strategic plan with?
So we submit a strategic plan with it. It's not our strategic plan. So.
Because that's what the ARM ten fifty-five six oh one is, is based on the strategic one.
Okay, I will, we have to write, so when they came up with the new accreditation standards, they were like, oh, and one thing you have to do is write a strategic plan. And I was like, oh, good, we already have that. And the board wrote strategic plans for the last twenty years. And in my mind, we were just going to submit our strategic plan, show them that we had one. They had a whole format for their strategic plan, which was different than the strategic planning format that we use with School Board Association. So we basically ended up having to create an entirely new strategic plan, which actually was approved by the board before it was submitted last year. So we didn't resubmit it this year. So that number is a holdover from last year. So.
The number one is?
Yeah, I'll have to go back and and dig it up for you. So I'll work on that for you.
Any questions from the board or the public on our accreditation status? Yeah, it'd be helpful. We would well revisit it here in a month or two.
I agree.
Just to make sure that we've had it all clarified, see if there's any shortcomings that we can focus on. Okay, next item on the agenda is our consideration of service contract for mental health services with Intermount Children's Home.
Yeah, so these are two separate contracts. They're both in your packet. I noticed when I was looking through the supporting documents tonight that we actually got the county election resolutions tucked in between them, which it was supposed to be at the end of the packet.
I noticed that.
But the contracts themselves are just renewals of, and they're, we call them contracts, but they're service agreements. We don't, these contracts don't involve us paying them any money for these services. It involves us providing a location for them to come in, for Intermount Children's Home to come in and provide mental health services to kids in school, on site. HSS stands for home support services. It's a type of mental health support program. And these service agreements both apply for grades three through eight at Radley and EBMS. Home Support Services is a, I guess, the best way to describe it, a new-fangled version of CSCT, which was Community Comprehensive School of Community Treatment. And then SBOT is School-Based Outpatient Therapist, and that's a mental health therapist who has a caseload of kids at Radley and EBMS that she works with on site. It's more convenient for parents. The kids miss less school that way, and we have kids that need the service.
Okay. For board this evening, we have that consideration for those two service contracts. I would entertain a motion to approve them.
So.
Second.
Motion, and a second from Stacy. Questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments for the public?
Do they not reach out to the high school? Like, is it, is it just a?
We have a different provider at the high school. It's aware and they've really struggled with staffing. So they do have, did you tell me two students that they're serving here right now? That we were working on trying to get that beefed up. They just have a hard time finding therapists to hire that will actually stay. I guess the best way of putting it, so, yeah.
Good question. Any other questions, comments? Saying none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Motion carries. And our tenth and final item is our consideration of county election administration.
Yeah. This is a resolution to work with the county for our 2026 school elections. The I feel like the county does a good job with our elections. They are getting pretty expensive. If we don't work with the county on the elections, then we've got to do all of that ourselves, which is the mailing list, the registered voters, the printing of the ballots. If we do a mail-in election, if we do a in-person election, we've got to hire election judges and locations for staffing it. So we've been working with the county for at least the last ten years, do you think, Scott?
Uh, I'm not sure that it's been quite that long.
At least seven or eight years?
Yeah.
And so right now, with Jill being as new as she is, I think this is the best course of action. But if you want us to consider other options, we can do that. I do believe we have a time deadline on this resolution. I don't know if it's the end of June.
It's pretty close. It's pretty, it's pretty tight.
I would make a motion to approve the resolution to utilize the Lewis and Clark County Election Office for the spring two thousand twenty-six school election.
And do I have a second? Second from Tiffany. Questions or comments from the board?
Of course.
Yeah.
I just, you know, it it used to be we had election days. And the older I get, there's more like election weeks and months. And it's my opinion that and 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 I recognize that it costs a lot of money to run an election now because you have to hire so many people. But it's our responsibility. And and I think we did, we did a real good job of getting it over in one day. And this year was at least two weeks before they could certify the election. And I think the the election was, should have been over at whatever, ten o'clock on Tuesday night. Instead of this. And I think the more time, the longer an election is not called, the more possibility of irregularities. So I'm not necessarily against this. I know I'm on the, I'm on the irrigation board too. And they insist that we must have them, this same bunch insists that they must win our elections. And they don't even have, they don't look squat about it. Because for every acre in irrigation district is one vote. It isn't one man, one vote. It's one acre and one vote. And some people have fourteen hundred acres. And and to be honest with you, I've only been on that board twenty-five years. We've never had an election. But they insist we must have one because even if you're running unopposed, they want to be involved in the election. And it's like, yeah, we we need to spend seven thousand dollars for this election so that you can be involved in a non-contested election. So that's just some observations.
Well, as a board or as a district, we do not have to have an election if it's not contested. So then we're, we don't have to do that. I do know, I do know historical perspective, Kim was always frustrated as the business manager, having to administer the the elections as well. And it's just, it's because it's a lot of work for the staff. There's a lot of people, a lot of things that have to to occur in order to make that happen. Then you have to have election officials. You need to monitor that. There's got to be people there all the time. You know, so it does, there is a lift associated with it. And so we've got that. I've, I share your frustration as far as the county goes and the timeframes that it took to be able to canvass or get our votes canvassed. But on the same token there, then there's requirements that they have to allow provisional ballots. And then they have to allow individuals to correct those provisional ballots. So there's a timeframe associated with that. And it's just the time that it takes to be able to do that. I was frustrated, Dan, and I shared a frustration in the fact that they were getting danger close to not being able to provide us with election results within the statutory time
Yeah.
that is required by the state. And if the county cannot run an election that needs state requirements, then there's something flawed in the system. I mean, who who then can can do that? And so that, but we got that hammered out. We got our elections canvassed and certified properly and got it done in time. And we'll just have to continue to do it that way.
But the thing is, it, I mean, by statute, it's actually our responsibility. We can, we can delegate that responsibility to others, but it it does come down to this board determining the results of those elections.
It is. And we have to certify that election and we have to do that. Those are.
What does it cost? Just?
I think the number that sticks in my head this year was twenty-two thousand dollars.
With postage going up, it's probably going to be there?
Well, I mean, you're, you're right. To Mark's point, though, we used to wrap up elections by, well, usually it was closer to midnight. We were done counting ballots, but those were in-person elections at polling places. And so the polls usually close at eight. Ballot boxes were all to central office by, I don't know, nine. And then counting went on until it was done. And so it's not outside the realm of possibility. I, that type of election might be cheaper to run, but you have to have election judges at all of your sites and you have to. I think we're required, within our district, because we're so spread out, I think we're required to have at least two or three different, or three or four different polling places, maybe closer to five.
Dan, do you have any stats on, on, I guess voter turnout would be the wrong term? Amount of votes that came in by polling place versus mailing?
I don't know if I, I I I think the conventional wisdom is you get a better response with a mail-in ballot. But I I don't have like stats for you.
Really? I thought that was the opposite.
No, it's actually significantly higher in a mail-in ballot than it is in an in-person ballot.
And how many years have we been using the county? Sorry?
When we did just a regular election, we were getting seventeen and eighteen percent. The the registered voters weren't voting. So the mail-in elections started when we run the bond for the middle school. I think that was about two thousand. And because there's no, you can run the election, but if you don't get, if you don't get fifty percent of the electors or the registered voters plus one, it doesn't matter if it won by a hundred percent, if every, it it's gone. So and we knew we needed room. And so that's why we converted. But we had several elections that were fairly close in those years, one that was by two votes. And during the handful, we opened the meeting and did the minutes and whatever, and then we canvassed the vote. And one, one of the trustees read the ballot and then everybody else put a mark. And after four marks, on the fifth mark, everybody said, mark, and I'd say, yeah, and let them put a cross across it. So we were clarifying that it was, and and, you know, it took us maybe I think there was probably about five hundred ballots there. But it probably took us an hour. But we were done and we were, everybody was satisfied. Even the person that had two less votes was satisfied and we went about our business. So I'm just saying, it can be done.
Yeah.
And I do know another thing too, to your point, Tiffany, is that Kim was always telling me that the number of people that request mailed ballots has an absentee because that's an option. There were a significant amount of people that would require that anyways. So it became a case of if you're going to have to do mailed ballots anyway, you might as well just do it from some as opposed to having a hybrid between the two.
And how many years have we been using the county?
Uh, as I said, it's about six or seven. Yeah, there there's some issues with it, but I guess.
Do we pay that money regardless of whether we actually have an election?
No, if we cancel the election, we would not have to.
So even if we agree to it now, if we end up not having to have an election, then we don't have to pay that money?
Right.
So just, Mark brings up a good point about the timeline of the results. Is there a way that we can work with the county on that? Maybe try and get a little bit better schedule on that so it's not a surprise?
Work with the county and anything else?
Well, you know, it's it's a try, it's a hope.
The, Scott talked about the provisional ballots. By law, they have to wait, what, a week until the following Monday to even open them?
Okay.
So it's not like we're ever going to get results the same night. I think my my best guess is that in past years, when the board has certified the election on Monday night after the Tuesday election, is we were going on the data that we had and probably had the knowledge that the provisional ballots would not have swayed the result one way or the other. So in other words, the the differentials were larger than the number of provisional ballots. But that's, that's, that's my best estimate.
So I mean, just based on the last election, we had what? We had, oh, two thousand, almost like two thousand people voted?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, so that's a lot more than five hundred. Yeah, I mean, that's a lot of work, so.
Yeah.
I I just was curious because I know that was kind of a a surprise, like, oh, we're not going to get this. And so now we have this meeting and then that meeting.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it just was a time investment, something we weren't expecting.
But if it's the way it is, and I'm in twenty-two grand for that, is
I guess it's not horrible.
And likely, we were doing it wrong. Likely for all those previous years and stuff, we probably weren't following the letter of the law. And we should have probably been waiting. And in fact, there's some school districts that normally do that. That's not even unusual. They're surprised that we aren't setting up the Monday after the election.
Good to hear. Thanks for answering.
So any additional questions, comments from the board? Questions or comments for the public? Saying none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Motion carries. And that will conclude this evening's meeting of the East Helena School Board Trustees. Our next federal meeting will be held July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Right at the Esai Middle School pending air conditioning accommodation. And
I understand.
That will adjourn our meeting. For those board members that are here, before you go, we do have a card for our
I don't have a card right now.
As we sent her off from earlier.
No, I was like you, I want to, I reduced the fleet by two.
Right. Yeah.
Immediately. In-law visitors.
I've heard it's
Immediately. The incident we sent. Yeah, she graduated.
She graduated? I know when I I asked her about the, I was like, so do you think you want to do board meetings? Because we're kind of cycling your last board meeting.